Evening and welcome to the school committee meeting this evening, Monday, May the 23rd. This meeting is being recorded for LCTV, being aired live and being livestreamed through LongMeadow.org. And this meeting was also posted as required by open meeting law. We can begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. We do have correspondence for this meeting.
We have an email dated April 25th from Ms. Barb McGlaughlin regarding the Bring Your Own Device for eighth graders, an email dated May 6th from Ms. Laura Gephardt regarding the Wolf Swamp Road School principal search, an email dated May 11th, 2016, thanking the school committee for supporting no fee for full day kindergarten, and an email from Ms. Donna Hutton and Ms. Marie Pratt regarding the principal search for Wolf Swamp Road School and requesting the elementary principal team sit on the search committee.
Thank you. Any visitor comments? All right, any school committee comments? Yes?
Really quickly, obviously, we have a basketball coach who just got named Mass Life's Coach of the Year, so congratulations to her. And also, I'm gonna take my school committee hat off for one second. The Senate will be entertaining, and the House, on Wednesday, the LHS Girls Basketball Team, the Division One State Champions, they'll be coming to the State House, they'll be meeting with the Speaker, and then they'll be introduced in front of the entire Senate. So, we're looking forward to honoring them for their accomplishments.
Fantastic. Okay. Anyone else? Russ?
I just noticed that the graduation and lacrosse-gambri conflict, I'm gonna try my best to make it to the graduation, but they're, I think they're at the same time, so.
June the 12th at 1:00 p.m.
Yeah, it's a Sunday.
Sunday the 12th. Anyone else? All right. I am going to rearrange the agenda for a couple matters. One is Sam, for your report, because I know your sister just got back from college and you want to go home and see her, so floor is yours.
Thank you. Just a few dates coming up. The Long Meadow High School Prom will be on June 2nd at the Long Cabin. We're very excited for that. Also, as was previously stated, the graduation will be held on June 12th at Symphony Hall. And this week, the Major Work Concert will be taking place Thursday at 7:00. Groups such as the orchestra, the wind ensemble, and the mixed choir, the mixed ironers choir lyrics will be performing, and it's a great program. And just a few sports updates, the girls' track and field teams, team just closed its undefeated season, and they were named the Western Mass Champions, which is very exciting. And also, the two lacrosse teams, men's and girls' lacrosse, are closing in on a Western Mass title, too. And personally, the baseball team, we're in a playoff race right now, we have three games left in our season, and if we are victorious in the last three games, we'll be headed to playoffs for the first time in like nine or 10 years, which is a, is a big deal for us. So, if you're finding some, if you have trouble finding something to do on Friday at 4:00, head down to Russell Field and support your Long Meadow Lancers. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd just like to take a moment to recognize that this is Sam's last meeting, he will be graduating, and we'd like to thank him for his service as the student representative to school committee, so.
Thank you.
Sam, I'd like to just say a few words. Being the student representative to the school committee is laborious, it's many evenings out, you are a musician, you're a scholar, you're an athlete, and this is just an added responsibility that you've taken quite seriously. You've done a great job of updating us and appraising us for what's happening at the high school, you've advocated well for your peers. We've been honored to have you, we appreciate it. As I mentioned earlier, you've also been subject to some of the longest meetings that in school committee history, so we appreciate all your work and we wish you best of luck as you go to Tufts University.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We have a certificate for you, as well as a little gift, so that you'll remember us fondly.
Thank you very much.
This is for recognition of your work, and this is for you, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. I appreciate it. If I could just say a few words, I said it earlier, but I'd just like to thank everyone on the committee for, you know, really helping me through this, and I, you know, I remember this time last year as a junior, I saw in the main office that this position was open, and I thought to myself, yeah, this would be pretty cool, and then I, you know, I saw Joseph Rinaldi, and I was like, wow, you know, he's just some big shoes to fill. But I decided to go ahead with it, and I, you know, I couldn't be happier that I decided to do that, and I met some really amazing people, and as I said earlier, I had no idea, you know, the things that go on behind the scenes at the high school, at elementary schools, at the middle schools, and it's just, you know, eye-opening to see, you know, how much ever, how hard everyone works here, and how dedicated everyone is to, you know, providing the best education to the kids here, and it's really inspiring, and it's, you know, it's inspired me to, you know, maybe at Tufts next year, get involved in, you know, into the student government, and we'll see. But I just wanted to take a moment and thank everyone, and it's been a great year, and I, you know, I couldn't be happier that I decided to join you guys. So, thank you, thank you very much.
And Sam, please, go home to your family and your sister, and we'll see you at graduation.
Yes, yes, thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome.
No one ever thought Joseph was gonna leave. That's why he was so surprised.
And so, we also have representatives here from Witsen's this evening to do their presentation. Tom, I didn't know, I know this is under financial reports and financial sub, but did you have any introduction?
Yep, so tonight you have Rob Stillem and John Preneer, who are here to update the committee on the last year of food service operations. Back three years ago, when we entered the contract, it was a one-year contract with four renewal options, so every year, they come before the committee to provide an update, and the committee has to vote to amend the contract to extend operations for another year. So, that's what we are here, hopefully, tonight, to get your endorsement of an amendment to the contract for the '16-'17 school year. So, I will turn it over to John and Rob to present their information.
Hi, thank you for the time, and we always look forward to coming before you and presenting, and certainly, I know how challenging it is with people's schedules and so forth, so we'll be as brief as we can and be as detailed as we can, and answer as many questions as we can in the shortest amount of time. So, we have a PowerPoint presentation is up on behind you, probably the easiest way to follow along. The agenda's pretty much slide to slide, so I don't know who's got the.
Sue's got it. She'll roll it down.
Thanks for the roll, so.
Sure.
So, that's me, and basically, my responsibility is, I'm Rob's boss, but doesn't really go that, just, you know, I got other things to do, but that's one of, this is one of my contracts, and as we're built as a company, district managers have certain territories and certain responsibilities, and Long Meadow has been under my auspices for three years now, so Rob's been here since the inception of, in our beginning here, three years ago, so we're still here, so maybe we can forget that slide next time.
I think so.
Okay, so, a couple of weeks ago, we met with the Financial Subcommittee, reviewed year-to-date performance in the current fiscal, and set budget parameters for school year '16-'17 with a lot of different documents that aren't particularly in front of you, or I think that you've already been forwarded those documents before. There's one minor change in the, in the budget, it changed a hundred and some odd dollars, so that the subsidy amount, when you look at the second slide, and I'll explain that to you, just, there was a little bit of an error in the formulas in the Excel sheet, so we actually picked up some meals and changed a little bit on cost, but it ended up being about a hundred and something dollar change, but overall, when I get to that slide, I'll tell you what it is. So, the first slide, basically, is current year, where we are, projected to be at the end of June, revenue $678,854, expenses $704,731, so equates to a program subsidy of $25,877. And I put the caveat out there, that's without inventory, as the district owns physical inventory, so we carry that, Witsen's does not do that, but we, the district carries that on the books. So, that will, again, depend on what level of inventory we have at the end of the operation, which is always projected to be very, very low in comparison to where we are on a month-to-month basis, because we carry a higher inventory as we operate, and then, as we get down into diminishing operating days, we try to really get down to close to zero, as we can. Certainly, all of our perishables, our milk, our bread, everything is completely wiped on, off of inventory. You'll carry some canned goods, you'll carry some frozen, and you'll have some things like that in inventory to carry you through the summer, and we'll be here in September, but it's inventory, it's on the books, and it rolls forward. All your commodities, at the same time, are owned by the district, same principle there, everything's on inventory, everything rolls forward. The meal, the meals, basically, we look at meals two ways. We have lunch meals, which is a complete reimbursable meal, five components, qualifies for reimbursement from the USDA and from the state, and then, we have à la carte equivalents. So, by contract, there are certain revenue streams that come in that are divisible by a factor, and in the contract that Long Meadow has signed three years ago, they use a $3 equivalent factor. So, what we do is basically take all of our à la carte purchases, which is anything outside of a reimbursable meal, snacks, milk, anything single purchase, our adult sales, and then our catering sales, and we divide those by $3, and we come up with what they call an equivalent factor of, in this case, $57,974 meals. Where that helps us look at the program is, is the cost of the program is set based on cost per meals, so that when we look on the overall, what it costs to build a meal, we look at 90 cents, a dollar, a dollar ten, and we know exactly where some of the thresholds are, and we're looking at everything evenly across the board. So, that's where the à la carte equivalents come in, plus the management fee and the admin fee that is contractually in your contract is tied to, to those meals, as Witsen's gains management fee and admin fee from those, derived from those meals. Okay, so, okay, so this explains a little bit more about meal participation, a little bit deeper in current year. So, the slide covers, basically, current year, daily average percent of reimbursable meals served, and then slash, the second number would be the à la carte equivalent, so it would be taking those sales on a, and this is on a daily basis, so these are averages of what a day looks like at the high school and each one of the schools. So, if we look straight down, you know, top to bottom, high school, 262 reimbursable meals, taking all the dollars, we factor for the others, the other à la carte and adult, 136 equivalent, equal 398 meals, divisible by the enrollment in the schools, about 900, I believe we'd use 953 or 9-something, so we have about 42% of the students participating in the program, in one way, shape, or form. Certainly, two ways to look at it, how many kids are buying meals and how many kids overall are participating. This particular slide, we look at it with the overall, so we, we sort of know where the traffic is in comparison to the enrollment. Glenbrook, a little higher, 50%, Williams sort of shaved down to 45, and then we get into the Elementary Center, 39, Wolf Swamp, 42, and Blueberry, 35. So, if you look at the à la carte sales in the elementary school, there's considerably less, if you look at the à la carte equivalents in Center, Wolf, and Blueberry, considerably less, because snack options are just limited, and the purchasing is, by the students, is not focused in that area for, for them. Okay, so, okay, so, all that, all that in one big picture, we go to the next year, which is next year. So, that '16-'17 budget projection, which would end a year, June 30th, 2017, we're projecting revenues to increase slightly to $683,107, total program expenses to increase more than the revenues, and I'll get into that in a little bit, $733,440, and then program subsidy would increase overall to $50,333. Again, no inventory. Meal increase, meal, meal participation increases slightly over year over year, with new totals $163,523, and à la carte, pretty much leveled, not really projecting increases in à la carte, which looking at meal increases more, more year over year than à la carte. Okay, factors, very important, this is probably the most important slide for everybody to consider. So, what's happening here? So, conservative revenue growth, 1%, increasing fixed costs year over year, so your contract calls for your fees, your management fee and your admin fee with Witsen's to grow by what the CPI year over year is in March, so the index this year is a 2.5 increase, percent increase, so that factors up. Controllable operating expenses, things like knife service, and then you have food, paper, cleaning supplies, all basically maintaining level to slightly increased costs. This is like any other business, things do go up, there are, and things get passed off from manufacturers onto, onto us as, as a company, but, you know, really, it's pretty level compared to current year in that area. One factor to consider here, without getting into a lot of detail, is when we talked about it with Subcommittee, is the subsidy is based on the fact that we will not raise meal prices next year. So, we will go into year four of the current level of meal pricing, no increase. So, certainly, if there was consideration for meal pricing, then we'd have to go back in and dive into the numbers and then, you know, see exactly what that would do, cause and effect. Biggest, and this is, I left to last, because I have to talk about this the most, the biggest increase that we're gonna have next year is labor cost. Again, we're gonna have a dollar increase in the minimum wage in Massachusetts, the second consecutive year. Year over year, we're gonna have a 5% increase in labor, which is equating to us $18,000. So, the dollars that we're spending this year, automatically, just because of what we normally do, is we, we give a merit increase to our team members year over year for their performance, and then, all the team members that are below the $11 threshold will get the $11 January 1st. So, they'll almost have like a proration, they'll start the school year somewhat below 11, and then, January of 2017, January 1st, they get 11. So, that factored in is $18,000. Part of that increase as well is we have a new USDA mandate, and I think everybody in the room's familiar with USDA mandates sometimes. All of our people, Rob, Rob's position, all the way down through the general worker positions that are only working 15 to 17 hours a week, have got to be, have a certain level of training that's documented with USDA and the state of Massachusetts on a yearly basis, and they have to receive certification for those professional standards, which they call now. Based on how many hours in the, in the rank of, rank of your position, Rob would maintain the highest at 12 hours, going down to the building cafeteria leads, where person's in charge of each building, would go down to eight hours, then, depending on how many hours a week you would work, whether it's over 20 or under 20, would dictate whether you're six hours training or four hours training. So, all of that gets rolled up into that $18,000 number. This is a standard that sort of started this year, but very loosely maintained. This now becomes a mandate for all food service programs in the United States. Okay, I didn't want anybody to forget that we're just not about numbers here, that we do feed children, and we are really concerned about their well-being, and certainly, what was important three years ago, and what Witsen's was very proud of, we're still very proud of. There's a couple of things that people may not know about, but should be aware of, that there's a district menu page, we call it the nutrition page, that's attached to the district website, all of your Witsen's related information with your menus, any nutrient information labeling, everything is completely in, in that document, plus any updates, anything that Rob's got going on in the district is posted in there, anything that's going on in Witsen's world, or anything in USDA land, we're trying to keep up with as much current info as possible. At the same time, as, as we start to develop social media sites, we can attach those to that page and/or individual school pages, whatever way is best for the district and to connect with the, with the community. We will continue to work with the Wellness Committee and the policy and the initiatives that go along with the district, so anything that is being set forth by those committees and those, those Subcommittee's, we will follow. We will continue with the zero trans fats, the lower sodium is a debatable topic right now, because it's something that they're pushing USDA to sort of put the brakes on, but there's a mandate between the first year of Healthy Hunger Free, which was five years ago, to 2022, to basically lower sodium in food to basically nil. So, I know everybody in this room deals with sodium at some point in their food, whether it's, they add it, or they cook with it, or they don't add it, or whatever, but the amount of sodium that is gonna be in our food in 2022 is miniscule compared to where it is right now. So, we have to lower sodium, lower calories further, and then still increase fruits and vegetables, and work with specific portion sizes, so that's a big one for everybody to understand, that we not only have got to get fruits and vegetables on people, on child's trays, but we also have to work with the specific grade groups at each grade level, and specifically work with portion sizes that may, in some cases, look like they're undersized, and they may not be enough, but we have to work with that, because we have to work with the calories. Every one of our menus are analyzed by our dieticians and, and okay before they're posted. We also have to continue with a 0% fat-free flavored milk option, so we have that as a chocolate in the district, Rob, correct?
Chocolate and strawberry.
Which, and strawberry, and, and the white milk, which could be a zero fat, but in most cases, we're doing a 1%.
We have both, fat-free and 1%.
Doing both, okay, good. And, a little bit different this year going forward is, is that Witsen's had been on a 100% whole-grain-rich grains, breads, whole, you know, whole wheat. USDA's backed off of that a little bit for next year, so we can actually go back to a 51% threshold, which was actually in the first couple of years of HHFK, they're sort of dialing that back a little bit. So, that's gonna give us a little flexibility in the students that are walking up to the deli and seeing everything whole grain, everything brown, every pasta brown, everything that sort of becomes sort of unappealing. So, we'll start making some of those changes subtly in the menus going forward. Okay, operational focus, continue growth through menu enhancement at all school levels. This comes in a lot of shapes, forms, certainly, we've done a lot, and we need to do a lot more to raise participation, to increase culinary focus throughout all the schools. Again, I think we've taken it to another level. I've begun, begun my principal meetings this year, I met with three today, I will meet three next year, next week, very positive on, on the, on the food quality and the presentation, and, and again, we need to take it up another notch. Continuing to focus, especially in, in the middle schools and the high school, on food bars that are increasing speeds of service, so we can get more kids through the line faster, raising levels of participation, giving them more time to eat, and having bigger, better customer satisfaction. The last thing you want to do is have students have two or three minutes to eat, they can't eat in time, they rush, and they're not satisfied, so that, all sort of a drawback. And then, one of the biggest initiatives that is really happening now, and we brought a little, oh, you got it, Rob? Okay, so, that's my friend here, that's our little kiosk that we actually used into two middle schools last week, and we left the packaging of the results of the survey that we did with the, with the middle school folks, and I think we did 476.
Thereabouts, yeah.
Thereabouts, we had 476 result on the surveys last week, which is really, really good, because it's immediate feedback, it's something we can put graphs, pie charts, towers, to anything we want to look at, construct it through Monkey Survey. And at the same time, as we engage parents into surveys, and we engage advisory groups, and we have other people that are, that are gonna be partners with us, we can start forming questions that really, students can give us immediate feedback in the cafeteria. At the end of the day, we can roll the numbers up, and we can have it on everybody's desk by the end of the operating day. So, it's really, it's really what we, where we need to be, how we need to, how we need to conduct. The old-fashioned way of surveys with paper, very much outdated, putting them on the websites, yes, but, you know, again, it's a little bit tedious, so this, we feel, is a really good vehicle. Witsen's is now become, becoming a little bit more technologically advanced, and, and the portability of the technology will get even better as we go forward. And the other, the other piece of this, I think Sue, we got today, is there another bullet under that one?
Well, sorry.
Yeah, okay, just, so, you know, and, and to some, we talked about last week, that we have had some turnover this year in some key areas, with, with team members leaving our organization, and, and new ones coming in, and not being as maybe fully vested as certainly the ones that had left, so there's some, somewhat of a deficit that, that we are certainly working on. Witsen's has administered a consulting firm that is now working with us to help us decrease turnover in a very, very difficult labor market, that's, in our case, below 5% in most markets, looking for some skilled labor at $11 an hour, tough, very tough. So, we've engaged those people, and we've engaged human resources into working with our directors, trying to find out what's making people tick, or what's not making people tick, and leave jobs, and being more investigative on people's departures and exit interviews. And we're getting some, some interesting feedback, not only from, from Long Meadow, but from a lot of different areas. So, we consider this to be a very much a challenge for us going forward, especially if, if everything starts moving towards the $15 rate, which, you know, is predicted to happen, but we don't know, it will certainly put more pressure on not only program profitability, but trying to gain talented people to work at those rates. The last thing of it is, is we, we're starting to work in the digital marketing and what they call digital billboard area, and meeting with some of the principals today, we've got a lot of flat screens in the area now, in the schools, that Witsen's can now start to tap into marketing, and, and basically getting the electronic menu boards in, and when we have special events with the exec, the regional chef coming in, we can do a lot of announcements through there. I think Tom Landr said there's 16 screens that are now being used in the high school, all over the school, so we could really start to do some in-your-face marketing with the students as they are all over the place, and, and the middle schools as well, they're a little bit more challenged, but we worked in a couple of different scenarios at, at the two today with the principals, so very exciting to move forward there. Happenings around the district, just wanted to give you a couple of little things, Rob, if you want to explain some of the pictures to the folks.
Excuse me, we got some sushi that happened, we got, the middle, middle top is Fiesta Fresca, it was a Latin cuisine that we did at the middle school levels. This, on the far top right, is the noodle pancake, and another, it was a whole-grain spaghetti that we turned into a Japanese-style noodle pancake. So, it's using the, the items that we currently have, and just putting them in a different route. We have in the, a little further down, about the middle-left, was one of the nutrition safaris that we did at the elementary level, that was a cranberry pear. That was a cranberry pear and just different sliders, just trying to get different food bar styles, which is John was speaking to before, of if it's flat, which is one of the concepts we talk about is flats. If the food is flat out and in your face rather than lowered in a well, so you can't really see what you're looking at, it's just eye appeal, you know? We all eat with our eyes first. And if we can have it out there so the kids know what they're getting and they can see and pick and it's like, wow, I get all these choices, that's a good thing. And that's really what we're headed to. And Sue, if you scroll down a little bit more, there's a link to...
Okay.
There it is. This is a YouTube video that our marketing team down at Corporate put together with just some pictures from some of the food we've done this year.
Is there volume?
There's a little volume there, there should be. There you go.
On the screen.
If you go to the bottom right, you can make it bigger, Sue. Right there. Doesn't really help with the volume.
See if there's a switch under that, under the speaker?
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was just music, it's not like it was talking.
Can you sing a little bit while we're...
Do you want to have an appetite? Because if you do, I will decide to not do that.
Well, that's good.
So, we do this with, obviously, it's all still within the same range of being aware of the allergens that we're putting in the food. Everything is labeled. We talk to the students about what it is they're having and we give them the ability to try something prior to actually putting it on their tray.
So, this seems to be, in our world, the sushi piece, really the home run with the regional chefs coming in. There's Chuck and Kate. We have some accounts that are able to support that on their own, certainly a lot of labor intensity. There's Ryan, our regional chef. It's just a collage of everything that, just brief, that we just wanted to show you a little bit. I mean, there's a ton of pictures and things that have happened all year long. It's just, I think you basically just want to know that wherever we can do scratch cooking, we're doing it. We're using fresh ingredients, fresh produce, you know, local produce where we can. You know, we've made that commitment. We want to stick with that commitment even through some of the adversity of the staffing issues and so forth.
There's your music.
Thank you, Sue. You're welcome.
Thanks, Sue. We'll do, we'll do more for you because we're actually doing monthly, as a corporation, we're doing monthly YouTube videos. And we're actually having all the directors send in photos from all the 90 accounts. And then, we have the video specialists down there basically cutting, pasting everything in. And he'll, at any point in time, can do a Long Meadow video so we can, we can update you guys and send out via email. We can send the link out so you can check out YouTube on your own. But we'll continue to bring forward the promotions. And certainly, what I heard today from the principals is they really like the chef to come in and do that and do this, and the kids get excited, which is, which is the most important piece of it anyway. And then, train the staff on the backend of this. So, some of these people don't know how to make a pico de gallo and he comes in and now you know how to make a salsa and a pico de gallo and everything from scratch. So, it's really neat sushi, rolling the sushi, so. Not quite sure where I am, Sue, am I done?
That's it for that.
Am I done? Okay. Oh, questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, you know, obviously, next year, you're projecting a $50,000 subsidy on our end, plus inventory. What do you, what do you think are some of the big challenges in trying to increase participation in the program? And do you feel as though you're getting the type of support from, or the buy-in from staff and from principals at the schools, you know, to help facilitate that, especially at the elementary schools? That'll be two questions, I guess.
Want to talk about the elves a little bit?
A lot of, well, all across town, there's a lot of brown bags.
Right.
There's, that's a huge hurdle that even at food committee meetings and just walking around the cafeterias, talking with not only staffing of our staff, previous staff and principals, it's just that mentality of, I'm going to bring my own food.
Sure.
And whether it be some parents feeling that they know what's going in their brown bag and they know that it's a healthy item, that's what we're serving as well. So, I don't know how to breach that gap. That's something we've been trying to do. It's something we'll continue to do and that's one of the things that we spend at least a third of the time at the food committee meetings on as to how do we do it. We set up the surveys, try to talk to the kids about it. The surveys at the lunch level are hard time-wise because the, with time, we can only do a multiple choice.
Right.
To do, go in there and get a fill-in-the-blank question, there's really no time for it. We were running into at the middle schools, they were running out of time because, well, it was technology and I'll just want to sit there and poke, push the buttons. But it's just, it's a slow process. I do know that anytime I've sat and worked with the principals, they've been really open to it. The biggest piece I found is actually talking with the students too. And the different student groups, and I think I'm just still open to it.
Yeah.
And by all means, like earlier today, we had a couple of female students come in about vegetarians and what we can do with that. And it's definitely something we want to work with, so.
I can speak from, Michael, I can speak from the secondary side and say that the more engaged the students are at the elementary level, the more engaged they will be at the secondary level because they bought in already.
Right.
Having not bought in at the younger age really is an adverse effect as they get older. But again, you know, not that it's lost, but you know, it takes longer to build and generate.
And we knew that was a challenge, you know, coming in, especially with our previous vendor not having the best reputation.
I think we've held it steady with some, some positive growth and growth that has sustained. I think last week, we, a week or so, we had a very intelligent conversation about our facilities. And I'm going to speak to the secondaries right now. The two middle schools are challenged with power, power issues. So, we have panini grills that we can't plug in because they blow the circuits, things like that. You know, the high school, we all know it's great, but we all would have to admit that there's some challenges there with the serving lines and the amount of students and the amount of put-through, we call put-through of volume and just the lines being so tight and linear that, you know, you can only squeeze so many kids into a certain space, so so many square foot. So, would, would we like it to be better? Yes, but you know, it's, we're not, we're not about the change that we're about to do, do better with the, with the facility that we're given and we have to do it through creativity, through menu, better marketing, certainly engaged at a higher level. And I think we really now are seeking people that can help energize that process in the district. And I think that's maybe what the second part of your question was.
Yeah.
Is really get buy-in from administrators and, you know, Rob really keeping on the forefront and me becoming a little bit more engaged. And having watched it and certainly knowing where we came from and knowing where we are, I think we've got positive results. Now, we're, you know, we have a little bit of a stiff wind at our, you know, next year with with just the costs. Labor costs and certainly want to get people as productive as possible and offset that subsidy as much as we can.
Sure.
But again, you know, we're, you know, we're not looking at meal price increases next year again. You know, we, you know, we sort of have a little bit of a headwind here that we're going against. And, you know, whether it's a one-year thing or does Massachusetts decides to do this for another three more years of a dollar increments? I don't know.
Right.
But I think we've, we've challenged it to a point that now we need to engage at a little bit of a different level and take a little bit of a different strategy. Think the food has been pretty good. The menu diversity's been good. And could it always be better? Yes, it always can get better and I think we'll challenge ourselves with that.
I just have one more follow-up. You, Rob, you said that there's a lot of brown bag
Yes.
at the elementary school, which I think we've always known has been an issue or not an issue, but you know, a condition. Obviously, Whitsons, you know, one of the things that struck us when we were out to bid was that you, you know, you're in a lot of districts that we find, you know, we like to compare ourselves to, demographically, socioeconomically. Are you finding in other districts like Amherst, for instance, you know, ways around that? Are you finding that there's best practices that maybe could be employed here or that haven't been tried out here yet to try to cut down on, you know, that brown bagging and, you know, different outreach, way, different ways we can outreach to parents to try to educate them better about what we're actually doing here?
Well, again, every district connects differently to their parents.
Sure.
Some choose to do, like I have some districts that do summer mailings and actually do hard mailings, where we actually do a newsletter and, you know, not only with new, new students coming into the district, but with, you know, just basically just revising anything that we're doing internally and letting people know that these are the changes going in. And, you know, do, do hard copies of a letter in the middle of August that they get, get read? I don't know. We'll do the postings online. Certainly, we're energizing Facebook, we're doing Twitter feeds, we're doing another, number of different social media connects that I think really we need to, that really need to exercise here a little bit more. I think that, that energy needs to really be put forth a little bit more. Probably do more sampling with kids on menu, especially at elementary. Let them taste. And if they're brown bagging it, let them taste and maybe overcome some fear.
Sure.
Because mom and dad, you know, pack the bag, there might be a certain way that things are, you know, done at home, ingredients that are used at home, there's got to be some, you know, break the ice type of thing. I can't say that there's one model out there that is actually good for one and, you know, good for everybody. There's a number of different things that are going on. And there's a number of different Long Meadows that are in my world today. And I don't have Amherst, so I can't speak from Amherst. I did, I don't have it anymore. But I have a couple that are very similar to this demographics and challenges with high school facility and/or, you know, where kids are coming in. You know, you really need to get, and the older kids, you really need to get food in front of kids. And you need, as Rob said, get it out, present it correctly, so they get, at least to get excited about it. Putting the hamburger in the bun isn't exciting anymore.
Right.
Getting a hamburger on a flat with all these toppings that they can choose, that's more exciting. It gets a little mundane after a while, but because they're in the same restaurant every day for 180 days. But it's better than just the alternative of everything on a brown bun in a brown boat with, you know, that's it. You know, where I think we're, we're very creative with our fruits and vegetables. I think they do a great job with our healthy harvest bars and the amount of fruits and vegetables that we're getting from DOD, which is a USDA program that we tapped into. And we have a lot of different fruits and vegetables there, which, do all the kids know about those fruits and vegetables? Probably predominantly, they do, the ones that eat. Do the brown baggers know? Not sure. So, I would say, you know, what I, what I've been seeing in the district when I go around is there's a lot of neat meals that are coming from home. I don't know if I, we can match all of that.
Right.
But, you know, creative lunch boxes and containers and, you know, I, I think there's just a lot of different ways that people think of school lunches. Is there a value there? Is it healthy? People really don't know all the dynamics of the rules that we have to deal with and knowing how really healthy it is when we're dealing with calorie counts and, you know, the fats and everything that we deal with, with a nutrient analysis. It's just incredibly healthy over the course of a child's week. And even if they ate five lunches per week, pretty healthy.
Right.
But we, you know, for most part, we don't get the majority of them eating five days a week, but we have some.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Michelle?
Hey, Michelle.
I saw in there a 1%, it looked like, is it a 1% increase goal that you have for next year?
Yes.
Does that in participation or in...
Yes.
Okay. And what have you done in the past?
It's pretty much ticked up between 1 and 2% for the last couple of years since we started. So, we had, obviously, walked in with the, wherever the company left off and then we sort of ticked it up since. I don't, we, like I said before, we really haven't, we haven't gone backwards.
Yep.
And then, there's been some program changes. But we haven't, we haven't taken any steps backwards on revenue without any pricing gains, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ross?
So, the management cost goes up 2.5% based on the contract language. What about the subsidy amount? Do we have any recommendations as far as how to address that or...
Well, we do have a lineup in our budget. I mean, this year, it's well below where it's been in the past. Previous contract had a subsidizing upwards of $100,000. So, it's definitely come down over the last three years. The labor is a big piece of it. Obviously, trying to drive participation up is our, the biggest factor that will help reduce that cost. We do have the money currently budgeted for the amount that they're subsidizing, or that they're projecting subsidy to be. I'll, I'll remind you though also, that is not the only cost we incur for the program. We do incur the cost of any repairs, equipment purchases, meals tax. So, there are additional expenses the district incurs directly, so.
So, what about like increasing à la carte prices? You're afraid participation might drop, is that the...
It's a fine line. You know, we did talk a little bit about increasing the meal price, but the state, the USDA requires us to do an analysis so that we're not subsidizing the free meals by charging less than what we would get for what a free meal would be. So, we're just under that threshold. So, I would say we will have to do, my recommendation at this point would probably be a quarter increase across the board for FY '18, based on us falling below the threshold on that calculation, which is why I didn't think we should do it this year at a lower increment. So, I do see us doing an increase for FY '18. We most certainly do look at pricing on all our cart items. But again, I'm concerned about adding a quarter on to things that then could cost us participation.
Okay. Thanks.
So, we have a, I was just looking at the page with the reimbursable à la carte equivalents. And you were mentioning at the elementary level, the snack options are limited. Is it possible to increase the snack options so that we can increase the revenue on those?
We could increase the snack options, but part of the parental look on it right now is that there's too many snack options as it is because of the level that it's at. The, especially at that level, there, the kids are going through, they have less time because they're going through with their tray. They're not even allowed to buy their snacks until they've already had their meal. And then, 15 minutes in, they're going out to recess. So, there's some days where you watch the kids and they've eaten half their food to jump up and grab cookies and then they're throwing it in the trash so that they can all get outside to eat. So, that again, is in... Right, well, at, only at Blueberry. At Blueberry Hill, they, they have to use cash. They can't use their account. The other two elementary schools allow them to use cash, use their account money. But it just becomes that, another fine line of where are we going with it? The snacks that we are putting out are the healthiest alternative that we can put out as a snack, but some parents look at it as, you're still giving my kids Doritos. It's, at that level, we're trying to more push the meal than the à la carte. And the principals at those levels are happy with their à la carte being loved because they want the meals instead.
So, you've met with the middle school and the high school principals and you're going to meet with the elementary principals to see...
Well, I meet, I meet with everybody all the time, but John met with three of the secondary.
I'm coming in independently and meeting with all the principals is usually a routine that I have in districts. And we've been here a couple of years now, so it's a good way for me to get my, my understanding of, you know, what's happening. I know, I know physically what's happening in the buildings with our people and our personnel and our menus, but a little bit behind the scenes and the kinds of energies that we may need to refocus. And I mean, it's really interesting just to get, you know, the perspective of the principal for 10 or 15 minutes and, you know, one, one simple thing may be a very wonderful solution to a little aggravation that they may have had for a couple of months, you know, so figure it out.
Well, I know they're in the cafeteria all the time, so they would probably know the kids the best and maybe the best way to, to increase revenue.
Well, back to, I just want to answer the à la carte thing in the elementary school. That's where we, I think the biggest criticisms of our programs come with snack foods in elementary schools. We came from a, before Healthy Hunger Free, we came from an environment where, and maybe not so much in Long Meadow, but in a lot of districts where it was wide open. And it was a big revenue source and a big source of profitability for programs to sustain profit. With all of, and a good majority of that gone, I mean, it creates big challenges financially strategically. It's no secret, it's been in the news for years. And everybody now, all the generations coming up of young children and young parents are on that bandwagon and they don't want to see things that they deem as not healthy, whether they're on the John Stalker list or not. I mean, they are what they are for Massachusetts. Connecticut has their own level. Everybody sort of has their own way of governing this. But we need to do what the district needs to do and then we need to sort of test it out. So, is a purple Dorito better than a blue Dorito? I don't think so, but in some people's minds, it is. Rice Krispie Treats may be great in one place, but not in another place. So, what is, what is a healthy snack? What is, you know, we can get into a lot of different areas. And I think it's, again, an investigation that we work with different committees, different advisories that we, you know, actually... we work with, different committees, different advisories, that we, you know, actually talk about the food, taste different foods and create different things and have kids try it. And, you know, do we get back to the simple hummus with a little pita chip? Maybe? Because I, I know a lot of young kids are eating hummus now. So, what's the flavor, flavor profile gonna be of the hummus? Is it with, you know, roasted red peppers? Is it garlic? I mean, what is it, you know? So, is it neutral? Is it flavor neutral? So, I think what we need to do is really just, you know, we've sort of have the floor of what we're selling. I don't foresee that changing unless you want it to change next year. And we'll keep that, that level of, we'll sustain that level of, of sales, of revenue. But, I mean, to go for, further with just adding items typically like that just for revenue source, I think damages our attempt to build sales for meals.
Awesome.
So, one question I had, you know, I love the idea of the kiosk with the, the quick questionnaire. And I'm sure that those are expensive, but is there a way perhaps to put those in place at the schools for parents in the fall on back to school nights? Now, I know the elementary schools all have them on the same night and the middle schools have them on the same night. I don't know if Whitsons has enough that could be lent, borrowed, swapped, whatever, but to have those where then you can get instantaneous parent feedback too.
The way...
Are they all on the same night, Jan?
No. The three elementary are one night, the two middle are one night, and the high school is a different night. So, it's three different nights.
It would have to be, we'd, we'd have to talk to the IT in town, but thi- this is just an iPad.
Oh, okay.
So, it, Survey Monkey's just a link that could, I could get the same survey on my phone.
So, perhaps working with Nick.
So, it could be perhaps something where I could talk to IT about getting a couple tablets on a table.
And have the signage and everything.
Yes, exactly.
Do the marketing with the gratitude and everything behind it, yeah.
Now that, now that we're here, it'd be easier to put it on a tabletop. You know, and, I mean, I see the carts going around the school all the time.
Right. But perhaps doing...
And if it can be used at night, why not? As long as we're watching it.
You know, the, the kids love to, to do a survey on there. You've got a captive audience. I was thinking, you know, to, for the parents, the back to school nights, you have a captive audience as well. And that might be a good way to get more parental feedback than just asking them to go online and do a survey. So, just a, a thought.
Thank you, Jan.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I'm gonna end it. I just wanted to quickly say, you know, that when we brought Whitsons in four years ago, three years ago at this point, it was under some, you know, really kind of tenuous circumstances for the district. We had lost our, you know, break even clause with our former vendor. We were not in a good position in terms of our relationship with them. And it has been a pleasure to have, you know, you in the district and, you know, Tom is right. We were subsidizing our previous vendor upwards of $100,000. So, you know, taking a minimum wage increase out of the equation, I think we're doing a lot better than we were previously. So, you know, all we can really do is continue to try to improve upon, you know, what we've been doing already. And, you know, thank you for your leadership and, you know, providing good lunches for, for kids. And hopefully we can continue to kind of get them buying.
You're very welcome, Michael. And thank the committee for all your efforts. And certainly, I think if you don't have my card, Tom, you can get a Hall of May. And I'm not that far. I'm sort of, I'm in Connecticut. I'm not, not foreign, but I'm in, down the road.
We don't hold against it.
Not too far. I live, I don't live in Massachusetts, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty close, so.
And just piggybacking on that, I know my kids do buy every day and they love it. They love the, you know, they started in middle school. When you came in, they loved it. Chuck, throw out to Chuck. They loved the Chuck move to the high school with them.
That's why I did it, Jan.
But they, you know, and, and having teenage boys who are happy with the amount of food and the taste and the, the variety, I, I think says a lot. So, I know that they're very happy with it, which makes me happy because then I don't have to worry about lunches.
Good.
So, and, and the fact that you're very open to suggestions and, and comments and, you know, ideas is, is always welcomed as well. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
Okay. I move that, on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee, that the school committee approve the amendment to Whitsons Food Service Contract extending the contract to 2016, 2017 school year and authorize the chair to sign the amendment.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And one more adjustment to the order of the agenda. We have representatives from the middle schools here to talk about changes to the middle school handbook. So, I would ask you both to come on up.
Taylor, you should just be here at every meeting.
I, I don't think Taylor wishes to come to every meeting, even though he is becoming a permanent fixture.
Does everyone know Beth Nelson, the Assistant Principal Ed?
Glenn Brook. This is Beth. Beth, this is the school committee.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you for having us this evening. What we have before you is our student handbook. Glenn Brook and Williams, their handbooks are pretty similar. And it's been this way for a number of years. Am I right in that?
It's been the same since I arrived this last year. So, I don't know when the last time there was a change made.
So, and Beth and I looked over the handbook this year and some, we made a few tweaks. Nothing drastic. More in line with updating names, dates, and school committee policies that have passed such as the homework policy, excuse me, and the, the hoverboard policy in which Superintendent Doyle, at the beginning of the year, said that we will not have on, on any school property. So, we updated that with next to our Heelys and ripsticks and others, other items that the kids would ride to school. One of the things that I also added in my handbook is that Williams next year's grade six to eight will have locks for their lockers. So, I added that in the lock, in the locker policy. I just added the word lock as well. There will be a replacement fee if a student loses a lock because this is a school issued lock that has a specific keyhole on the back that we, the school will have, be able to have access to it without actually having to destroy the lock by cutting it open with bolt cutters. So, I've added that to the Williams handbook. Glenn Brook does not have that. Did you?
We do not have that, no.
Okay. And then finally, we updated the absences. Previously, it said that the school office personnel will be contacting home. Now, we have school messenger. I'm sure as parents and having kids in the districts, you receive these automated phone calls. So, we just made minor tweaks. That's it from the Williams side. I don't know if you...
And then under the absences for personal illness or injury at Glenn Brook, we added once a student has reached five consecutive personal illness or injury days, a doctor's note will be required. We've had a lot of instances where parents are, the students are out of school for an extended period of time and we're not really sure why. They call the student in sick, but we don't understand why the student is out sick. There's no proof.
Are those examples of parents taking children on vacations?
That's what we would suspect.
Outside of vacation time period?
Exactly. So, we're hoping that if we have, with a note, we actually know if the child is sick versus a family vacation.
Do you kind of let them know that we don't like them to take vacations?
We do. We do.
When we can't.
And yes, absolutely. We do, absolutely.
Whatever. Well, I'm more seriously, you know, you know what I'm saying.
We do. And we, even when they do email the week before to say, oh, maybe my, my child's gonna be out, we do let them know that it's major disruption, especially in the middle school and the amount of curriculum that they miss in that period. But, it still seems to be an issue.
Any other, any questions for either representative? I do have, I don't know whose, which one we got. Is this one?
That's Glenn Brook that doesn't have any of the names. We've never had the names. We did not update the names.
I was just looking at the last day of school. You guys might want to put it as 2017 for next year.
That would be very, yes, for the, when the report cards go on.
When report cards come out.
Is that yours as well?
Just, just saying, you know.
Okay. That would be an important one.
Can you really stick into that hoverboard rule?
Yeah, we, we can't fle- be flexible on that one. I've seen some pretty kids go down William Street on the sidewalks on them. They're pretty good.
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, it's, I hate, it's something, even seeing some of the celebrities fall, I'd hate to see that happen in our school, so.
One question that I did have, because I know you're now on the rotating day schedules, is, and I know that in the high school handbook, or, or at least on their website, they've got a section, so the half day of school before Thanksgiving, this is the schedule we're gonna follow, or this is what day it's gonna be. Is that a consideration for middle school, at least on the web? I don't...
It's on our website.
It is on the website.
So, it's on, on the calendar. We have the set days for every single day. And then we have the early release schedule. We have a half day schedule. And we have a one or two hour delay schedule.
Okay, perfect. I haven't been on the website lately, so I just wanted to make sure that that was available for parents.
It is. I'm not sure that they might reference it as often as you may, but it is there. We still get the questions though.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the handbooks for us?
The homework guidelines. So, we're gonna do a parent survey that we're gonna talk about later in the meeting. And I see that we're adding language about that as well. I guess we probably just, if anything changed, we'd have to send out a separate update or something.
Well, I think it just says what's reported on the homework guidelines.
No, they're actually...
It's actually, the exact same thing that was approved is now in here.
Yeah. So, that's, when's the publication deadline? Is that coming up soon?
To get the discount, it's at the end of this week.
Okay. So, we could always update it later if we had to, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not, I don't know if it's gonna change or not, but just...
And we could always, from the school level, send a school messenger saying, this has been changed. Here it is, outlining it. So, at least they have the electronic version and they're made aware of it.
Okay.
If that works.
It works for me.
Is it possible to just put the link for the homework guidelines instead of print it? Or would that be more confusing? I guess I'm wondering which might be more confusing.
I think that's more confusing.
We do have the handbook on our website. And so, we can note, make, like Beth said, we can notify the public that we just have the current, most current, up to date copy of our student handbook on the website. And just note that the copy that the students have in their assignment notebooks were effective as of this week.
Perfect.
Any further questions?
All right. I move that the school committee approve the 2016, 2017 student handbooks for Williams Middle School and Glenn Brook Middle School as presented.
One second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right. Thank you both very much.
Thank you so much.
I'll see you in one in two weeks.
Only if you're lucky.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. So, back to the agenda. And I guess we'll just piggyback on the homework guidelines.
Perfect.
Michael, you and Marie had reworked those.
So, Marie and I met a couple of weeks ago at this point to take and, you know, take the feedback we received at the school committee level back and to make a couple of updates in addition to maybe clarify some questions. On the first page of the survey, everything remains the same. We're still identifying what school and what grade. So, questions one and two remain the same. There is a question related to whether or not the parent filling out the survey has a child, or the child they're filling out is on an IP of 504, whether they prefer not to answer or it's not applicable, which I think is useful feedback. Marie and I discussed, it's us- it's useful feedback in terms of understanding potentially what, you know, what the challenges are in, that the parents are experiencing when their student is doing their homework, whether it's related to their learning disability or whatever they might have on their IP or 504, or whether it's, you know, something else entirely. Because then we're able to kind of triage it a little bit differently. We had then asked the questions about, you know, whether or not the, you know, their parents are familiar with the homework guidelines. So, gauging whether they've actually read them and whether they feel as though that the guidelines have been implemented for their child. So, that's... Then we do the time question. We all kind of asked about to gauge how often or how long they're actually doing their homework for, whether it's 30 minutes or less, 45 minutes or less. And then after two hours or more, we aren't too concerned with the actual increment of time. We just realize that's a lot. So, that's good. We want to know whether or not the homework is consistent with the homework guidelines. So, we want to know, do, do parents think that they've reviewed them and that these are actually being followed? Finally, do we think that the guidelines have brought consistency within their child's grade level? So, you know, we were talking about that anecdotal evidence from the soccer field that, you know, my child's in Mrs. Johnson's third grade class and it's like 45 minutes of homework while my child's in, you know, Mr. Smith's class and he's only got 30. So, we want to know if, if there's some consistency. That means that, you know, it's being followed. And then we get into Liz's questions about homework and whether it's being assigned over the vacations and whether or not their group projects are assigned over vacations. And then, of course, we want to know if students are reading every night because a lot of these guidelines are absent that reading requirement. And then finally, we want additional feedback. So, we do have an open response question. So, you know, all in all, I think that the way that this has been updated and the questions that are being asked are gonna give us a really good gauge of, you know, what parents really think about and how they feel about their, their student and the homework that they are being assigned. And, you know, I think it'll give us a good opportunity to triage where there's issues. And it'll give us a good opportunity to make sure that we're being consistent where we should be.
All right. I'll open it up to questions. John, did you, okay, Michelle?
The only thing I, I wasn't able to see in here was a question about whether or not the parents felt that there was too much homework or too little homework, or if the, if the homework, amount of homework was appropriate for their child. It measures whether or not they think that the homework guidelines are being followed and...
Right.
But not how they feel about the actual amount of homework that their child has. And I think that's an important part that we should be measuring.
I think that we were kind of trying to get at that with whether or not it was being, you know, fol- like, because the guidelines are pretty specific to what we believe, you know, the kid should be, the student should be given, you know, from an academic standpoint. This question where it says, do you believe that the homework, the amount of homework is consistent with the guidelines, is really meant to kind of ensure that it's not exceeding or, you know, coming in under what that guideline is.
But I think we should be asking the parents if they think that the amount of homework is appropriate for their child. You know, how, now that they've been watching...
Sure.
The students follow the, you know, how do they feel about it?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's something we should be trying to gauge. And the only area to do that would be the additional feedback instead of just being separate comments. And I think, you know...
And what's going to happen? The staff came up with this guideline. What's going to happen if parents disagree with the staff had recommended?
I, I still think it's an important thing for us to measure. I also think we should ask the teachers how they think the students are doing with the guidelines, you know, because this was determined, but let's get a gauge for it. How is it going?
I would probably provide it to the teachers, too.
The survey, yeah.
Whatever the results are.
Is there, is there anywhere else we can look? Like, if we looked at another, like, district to see what their home, homework guidelines are or something like that? Because, you know, we have a really good, excellent district and we want to keep those standards. And if, like Michelle's asking, if parents, let's just say, everybody says, I think my kid does too, too much homework, let's lower those standards, then we're lowering their standards for our kids.
We did look at other districts.
So, we just want to be on the same par with, you know, well-to-do districts, don't you think? Well, no, not necessarily. If, if, I don't know if they're asking the parents how the students are responding to the amount of homework. But maybe if, if children are having so much trouble with it that it's actually causing them to stress out about school, have a negative experience with school, not perform better, but possibly perform worse, then maybe these guidelines, you know, I mean, it's, it's all relative to how they're doing with them. So, I think we should find out. I mean, the parents are home with their kids while they're doing the homework. Is this child crying and struggling so much to get all of the work done that it's interfering with their learning experience?
Right. But then you probably have a kid who sails through it and has fine. So, it's so...
So, that's gonna come out in the survey though. Do you know what I mean?
Right. But what are you, are you gonna change it for the kids that are struggling? And, and then it will change for the kids that are not struggling?
Well, I think you'd get a survey and see what sort of results we're getting. You know, if 50% of the people are saying it works and 50% are saying it's not working, then that's a measure.
Right. Then you don't do anything?
25 and 50, 75. I don't know, you know, but it's, it's...
I, I personally just have a kind of a concern about, you know, really, about that type of question because I, I really feel like it could lead us into a point or to a position where we're trying to micromanage what the teachers are doing in their classroom from the committee level. And that I don't think is appropriate.
I think we've already done that.
And I, I think that...
I mean, that's the, the guidelines did that. But...
Yeah.
I think the question is... I think the question is, because of the more recent surveys, especially at the elementary level, I'd like to see what parents are saying, 'cause I've heard both. I've heard some parents saying, "There's just not enough homework," and I've heard other parents say, "There's way too much." So I'd be curious to see if it's, if it's just kind of all over the place, or do we have, you know, 90% of the parents saying, "There's not enough homework."
Right.
'Cause I've heard that a fair amount, too. And I've also heard the "too much homework" comments.
I mean, the question is, is like, what do you, if you ask that type of question, what do you do with the, with the feedback? Because if we bring it back to the administrative team, and they bring it back to the principals, and they don't like what they're seeing in terms of, like, if the parents are saying, "There's too much homework in one grade, or one class," or whatever, you know, is that enough to ask them to change what they're doing? And I think it gets back to a standards question, and should we be holding our students to a higher standard?
Well, I think it depends on, I mean, I think you'd circle back to teachers and administrators, see if they agree or not. If they disagree, then there should be a conversation about why. But I don't know, without the discussion, it's hard to know. I mean, it may result in no change at all, could just lead it the way it is, I don't, you know...
This went through several faculty meetings with lots of discussions, because we kept getting feedback from the area staffs, and trying to get the three elementary schools on the same page, two middle schools took a lot of conversation. I think what really was the driving force, though, is our students get to high school and have to do two hours' homework. So if you, if you were to lessen the expectations in middle and elementary, you're setting them up for high school for a real shock, where they're not prepared to take on the load that...
Well, I don't know if it would be lessening or increasing, but once you implement something, I think, just, just like they did with the cafeteria world, you have to then measure it and see how it, how it worked out. So it's, it's not so much, I have no idea if the parents overall are gonna say, "It should be more, it should be less, it should be, you know, it's perfect the way it is." But I think we should try to measure it, and then decide if we need to do anything about it. It might be, we don't do anything about it. But I don't think it does any harm to figure out what they think of it at the moment.
And I would imagine that the teachers might wanna hear how the parents are finding this, what their kids are doing at home. You know, if they're not hearing directly from the parent, they might wanna see overall what...
Part of the challenge for the teachers, they do hear those diverse opinions all the time. It's too much, it's too little. And that was one of the reasons that we put together a homework procedure, because it was, it was varied at different schools, it was varied even on certain grade levels. So it was two years of conversations, and this is, this is how systemically students can grow in expectations. But I think, I think, I think you will find out you have very diverse opinions from the survey.
Yeah, and I think that doesn't, my guess is, where you do the survey, and you may find that it's just, it doesn't result in any change at all. But at least when somebody says, "Well, I have a problem with this," you could say, "Well, we put it together, we had all these stakeholders look at it, then we did a survey. The surveys showed that, you know, the majority of parents are okay with it," let's say. At least you have something to point to at that point, and say, 'cause I, I mean, my kids, there's been no issues, or we don't have any issues with homework one way or the other. It's not too little, it's not too much. I hear different things from different people, but I wouldn't say it's the majority of people I talk to. So I'm curious, as a committee member, is it just some people aren't happy with it, or is it something that actually is, you know, 90% of parents think it's way too much? Or 90% of parents think it's not enough? 'Cause I hear that a lot, too. But I don't think it does any harm to get the information. What we do with it is, you know, that's up to the whole committee to decide at some point.
But I think I agree with Michael, is we get that information, and say it's the reverse, say it's 75% are unhappy, 25% are fine, then those 75% of parents are having an expectation, and I think this is what you were saying, I'm...
Yeah, please.
But that, so 75% of parents who filled this out saying they're unhappy now have an expectation that we're going to change it. And if we say, "We collected the data, we looked at it, yes, 75% of parents are unhappy, but we're keeping it the same," that's not effective either.
Well, then we explain. Well, then we'd have to explain why we're doing that. But more information, I always think it's better than less. I mean, it's better to get an idea of, I mean, to implement something and not actually know how it's working out for people, I just don't think that makes a lot of sense. I mean, we don't know how it's actually working.
John?
What about just inserting a comment question, or feel free to comment, you know, to expand, if you have that on the end?
We do.
Well, I mean, each particular one. You just say, you know, expand.
I mean, listen...
Feel free to expand and explain your position.
If the committee feels like it's important to add that question, then, you know, we can add that question. I just, you know, I think one of the reasons why we, you know, as we had a thoughtful discussion about it, decided not to include something like that, was simply because we are concerned, I am concerned about kind of overreaching more than we already are in terms of how the staff are doing their jobs. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not the role of this committee to insert ourselves into the daily workings of the schools. You know, we deal with policy, we deal with budget, we manage the administration, administrative team and the superintendent. I don't wanna start telling teachers that they need to give less homework, I don't wanna start telling them they need to give more homework. I think it's good to know what parents are thinking about this, but, you know, at the same time, what are, I mean, what is Marie, or what is Marty gonna do with the feedback? And, you know, I certainly don't wanna put ourselves in a position, and I feel as though we might be putting ourselves in a position where we get this feedback, and it could be the reverse, where it says, 75% of parents think that there's too much homework, and then do nothing about it, because I envision another meeting with a lot of parents who are upset that we didn't listen to them once again. And you could say that by not including this question, that we're essentially doing that. But I think that, you know, the reason that I feel strongly we shouldn't include the question is because I think it does step into an area that this committee doesn't have any jurisdiction in. But, I mean, I think kind of, frankly, I think the whole survey kind of steps into that, and that's why I'm not a huge, I'm not thrilled about the survey to begin with. But, you know, obviously, I think everybody feels it's important to get this type of input.
Russ?
You know, in some ways, I agree with what you just said, except we set the guidelines already. So once you set them, you need to figure out if they're working or not. Either that, or we get rid of them completely, because once we got into the area...
We didn't set the guidelines.
Yeah, we didn't vote on them.
The administrative team did.
Yeah, administrators did, but once we did that, you've already walked into the realm of telling teachers what to do. So the question is, what we told them to do already, what administration did, is that working or not? You know, is it working out for everyone? So I don't really see the harm in asking, 'cause we're gonna get that complaint anyway, we already get the complaints.
Sure, I guess, I guess the point, I guess my, my kind of counterpoint to that is, the guidelines that were set, I mean, it's one thing to measure whether they're being followed, which the survey does do. It's another thing to say, "Do you think the guidelines are effective, or do you think, or do you think that they're appropriate?" And I don't personally believe that that's a community decision. I think that that is a decision that the educators, that we pay to do this job, that have the certification and the qualification, should have made, and they did make. And, you know, these guidelines are, you know, the outcome of those two years' worth of conversations with educators, not with parents, not with students, not with school committee members, but educators. And I think that there's, there's a slippery slope that we are trending towards as a committee, where we are trying to kind of stick our hands too much into what's going on daily, and that's, I don't feel like that's appropriate. And I don't, you know, and that's why I really don't wanna go further in the survey. But if the committee decides we wanna do it, we'll do it.
I just had a question, a wording of a question.
Sure.
And I know what you're trying to get at, because I sit on the committee, and I don't know if there's a different way to word it, but do you feel that the guidelines brought consistency within your child's grade level to homework expectations at your school? I don't know if there's a different way to word it, I don't have a suggestion of how to word it.
We struggled with it. The goal with the question was obviously, is third grade at center consistent?
Right.
And...
And I know what we're trying to get at, because I've sat through all of these discussions.
And so maybe the question could be better phrased, you know, is, are, is the homework being assigned at your school in your grade level the same across classes? There's not a great way to put it.
There's not.
In all grades?
And I know it's an important question, but I don't know how to word it better. And I hate to criticize without making a suggestion of how to word it better, but... Sue, are you having suggestions?
Well, I'm just curious how somebody in the third grade class at center, who has teacher A, is going to be able to comment on what teacher B is giving for homework accurately.
I mean, I think it's supposed to like, it's supposed to sort of gauge that anecdotal soccer field.
The anecdotal soccer field of, you know, my kids...
I can tell you that the fifth grade parents at Blueberry are texting each other, "Is your kid spending this much time? Is your kid spending this much time?"
Yeah, but I don't know if that's really useful, because they should each put, I would rather have a question about, "Do you feel the amount of homework based on the guideline is appropriate for your child than this question?" Because I think this is just, we should find this out anyway, just by everybody answering the question themselves.
But I, I, this question, I feel like the principals probably know the answer.
And I'm good getting rid of the question.
And Marie knows the answer to that one, too.
We've made great improvement, Kim, great improvement. That's why I did the homework guidelines, because there was such diversity at certain schools and certain grades, so, but, but it's never going to be perfect at any grade level at any school, because you have teacher discretion of what's going, what unit they're on with assignments. Homework is one of the most difficult things to try and bring continuity to. It's a challenge.
And it's subjective.
I could answer the question, "Do I think the amount of homework my child gets is in accordance with the guidelines, and do I think that amount is appropriate for my child?" You know, the second part of the first question. To ask me, "What I think as far as the other teachers in the grade,"
How could you answer that?
That's just not gonna be accurate.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, we had a hard time kind of keeping it down, you know? I'm happy to hear...
Unless I saw their homework every day, how do I really know?
I'm, we, I mean, we just tried to revise it to make it sound like it would've made a little bit more sense, but I agree that I don't know if it's, it's anecdotal, I mean...
Right. And we should get that information anyway by everybody.
Wouldn't we have that information anyway? If you were, should we have anyway?
Yeah, it'll come up.
I would be...
I would rather have the other question than this one. I don't think this is, really gives us any information.
I don't see any harm in adding, is the, the level of homework appropriate for your child? The only thing is, that goes, I think that has a different direction than what this is going. Like, this goes into the whole, what is that movie, No Homework, or that, that, No...
The Race to the Top.
The Race to the Top. It kind of goes towards that type of a movement. It's, it's a, it's a different conversation than I think this is, but I don't, I don't mind having it, just to have it. But I don't, I don't know if you need the, do, do you feel guidelines brought consistency within your child's grade level to homework expectations at your school? It's kind of like, this parent said that, and that parent said that.
Kind of empty questions.
It's, I don't think it's necessary, but...
Well, someone else, someone's child may take an hour and a half to do the homework, that particular assignment, someone else's might take 10 minutes, so it's, you know, you can't say, you know, Michelle, how long did it take your son to do the homework? I mean, Michelle's son could've had it done in 15 minutes, and it could've taken mine, you know, three and a half hours.
Right, so I would be in favor of eliminating that question, but I'm not in favor of adding the, is it an appropriate amount for your child? So I guess I would move that we eliminate the question, "Do you feel guidelines brought consistency within the grade level?"
Okay. And then, this is more for you and Diane, but we forgot a word.
So, do you have questions on here about, has your child had, been assigned homework
over a vacation? Do you feel that they should have homework over vacation? I mean, that's the same guidelines, what are we gonna do with that? If the parents don't want their kids having homework over vacation, and the teachers decided that they wanted it, it's the same thing that you're arguing against in terms of finding out if the parents feel that there are too much...
But it's in the guidelines that they should assign it.
But it's in the guidelines.
Okay, but the staff came up with the guidelines, and were asking the parents if they, what happens if the parents say they don't want homework over vacation? I guess that's the dilemma that you're...
It's in there, it's, I, I think that the question is, is it happening? Because it's in the guidelines, it shouldn't be happening.
Okay.
So we're verifying what parents are telling us is true, that in fact, kids are getting assignments over vacations when they shouldn't be.
So maybe we get rid of the, do you believe question?
If homework guidelines say that makeup work can be done at that time for someone who's fallen behind, but there should be no new projects or assignments given over vacation.
So, Michael, in that vein, do we eliminate the, do you believe students should have homework over projects?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's, I think we can get rid of that, too.
Yep. Because if we're trying to make the survey as objective as possible with a matter that's subjective to start with, then that would be removing the more chance of subjectivity.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, just, do you believe that students should have homework? Because they already won't, if the teacher is following the guideline. So really, it's...
If we're looking to gather information, it's just, has your child been...
It's more of adherence to the guideline.
Had assignment, had homework assigned over vacation, yes or no? Because that would then be able to tell us whether, based on their grade level, knowing whether the policy's being adhered to. Russ?
Ellen, sorry?
So, that's gonna bring me to, what is the, if we're not asking parents how this is really working, then what are we, what's the purpose of this study? I mean, what do we...
It's a pseudo-evaluation, I guess.
I mean, it looks like we're just evaluating whether teachers are following the guidelines, which is really the principal's role. I thought we were asking parents, you know, is it happening, and if it is, is it working out well? If the answer is yes, then we're great, if the answer was no, then we circle back and find out if there's anything we should, we should change, and maybe the answer's no, and we move on. But I'm not sure what the point of the survey is, if we're not asking parents how it's working. But I asked so that we could find out if it's working for everyone. I'm not really, if, if the teachers are doing it, yes or no, that's up to the principals to determine, really. I mean, I don't see why we're, that, you know, Michael, I would say is, we're, I don't know why we're getting into that, really.
Yeah, I mean, I, on a personal level, don't really understand the whole premise behind the survey anyway. I, I just, I don't know if, I, I just don't think that it's an effective tool to kind of gauge what's going on. I think, I think we're, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I disagreed with doing the survey to find out if it was being implemented right and whatnot. I thought, again, that we were, that we were doing it to find out how it was going for the, for the students, and for the teachers as well. I thought they were gonna...
Well, can it do a little of what it's doing now, and seeing if this, if the homework is appropriate for the children? I mean, if we're gonna send a survey out, can it kind of serve as two purposes? Do I have them go out and fill out another survey in a year from now, if, if there's a chance that it might change the homework guidelines?
I think your danger with the survey is usually the people that respond to those that have a strong opinion one way or another.
Right.
And you get a small percentage that will answer, and I'm afraid that you're going to get the opinions, it's too much, or it's too little, with very few of those that are content not doing the survey.
But I think you'd have to look at that. I mean, if you only get 5% participation, then it's not really a valid, I mean, this isn't a valid survey, anyway, 'cause we don't know how to create surveys, but, I don't know. I don't know. I, I was really thinking, we'd go to the parents and the teachers, and say to both groups, you know, these are the guidelines, how are they, are they being implemented, and if so, how's it going? I mean, those are really the three questions that I would have had. But I would have asked the teachers the same thing, because I'd like to know what they think of it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my concern, you know, with at least trying to gauge whether something's appropriate or not appropriate, is that it kind of, you know, it kind of gets to a point where it's, seems to be counterproductive. Because there's plenty of things that we teach on a daily basis that may not be appropriate for every child. I mean, to kill a Mockingbird may not be appropriate for every freshman, but we still all read it. And so, you know, there is a level of, you know, at what point do we, you know, is, are we asking the question because, you know, we're trying to, you know, undermine the academics that are taking place? And I think, honestly, I think the entire idea that we have guidelines is a little bit of infringing too much upon the academic freedom that parents have. And listen, I am very sensitive to parents who have children that, you know, struggle with large amounts of homework. I was one of those kids. I had an IEP, and it wasn't always easy for me. And so, but at the same time, you know, I also kind of understand that, you know, we demand a lot out of our kids, and we should. Still, we're still working on why we're actually doing it.
So we're really trying to figure out how our guidelines are working for parents and students. Is that, that's the end-all, be-all?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I thought.
Okay, so, um, maybe just a couple of questions are, are you familiar with the guidelines, yes or no? If you're familiar with yourself, or do you feel your student is spending, you know, not enough time on homework, just the right amount of time, or too much time? I think that would give us kind of a good answer on that. I mean, still keep our grade levels and things like that, but, and then, I don't know what other information, um, we would want. That's really the time piece. I think that, that's a struggle for, with the how much, or something like that.
And it's true, because what could be thirty minutes for one kid is not thirty minutes for another.
Right, so you didn't need to phrase it for your child, you know, relative to your child, do you feel?
Right.
Right.
So, so you're suggesting that after the question, how much time on average does your child spend on homework, not including reading, which gives the time breakdown?
I, I don't know if I would even do that. I would just, because they're already answering what, what school, what grade they're in, so we should know how much they're spending according to the guidelines. We should know about what they're getting for homework, right? I have to refresh my memory, but, do you feel like, you know, for your child, and I think it might, maybe also a question on, if homework is overwhelming, do you feel like you have options, or something like that, for?
That's a better question.
Avoiding that kind of struggle, or, because I know a lot of teachers do offer options for kids who are having struggles with that.
I'd be okay with those questions. I.
I'm, I'm good with that one.
I mean, I would probably just go with those questions, because, like, the question about whether you're an IEP or 504, I really, the guidelines are just meant as a general standard for everybody. The IEP or 504 would adjust the standard for that particular kid based on their needs. I don't know why we need to even ask that, really.
I think we were looking to see, you know, if the parent said that it was like way too much, or, you know, if there was another factor in there.
Sue, you could ask a question, something about, um, do I feel comfortable modifying my child's homework, or does my child at times get modified homework, or something?
Well, I think your, I think your question where you said for your child is going to answer that question, because they're going to say, based on their child.
Sue, why didn't you write this the first time?
You know.
I was doing something else, I think.
Because she's doing two other jobs right now, or two jobs on top.
Well, I think I missed, I was quite sure of the purpose of the survey, I'm going to be honest in saying, I was a little confused.
All right, so.
Then you volunteered, and I thought, you know.
Well, I was trying to move the meeting along. Um, so, okay, so, if your child is overwhelmed, or if homework is overwhelming for your child, do you feel that you, you know, that you're aware of the options available? Or do you feel that your child has options, something like that?
Yeah, something along those lines.
I think the, the crux of the problem is people are afraid to take advantage of the option, because the options are there.
Right.
There's a lot of times that kids don't want to take advantage of it themselves.
So maybe the second question is follow-up.
Because the options are there.
So maybe the follow-up is, are you aware of options that your child may have?
Would you take advantage of the options?
Would you take advantage? All right, Marie, we're meeting again.
But I would say something simple like that would make sense, just to get some brief feedback, and then see if it's overwhelming one way or the other. If it's not, then we're probably doing a good job.
Yeah.
You know, if it is overwhelming one way or the other, then we probably have to talk to everybody again.
Too much smell or just right, if it's, you know, if it's way one way or the other, then it's a challenge.
I'm not really clear on what we're saying. How many questions are we asking? So we're taking most of them out, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I, I don't know that we have to take them all out.
So we leave, let's just quickly run through what we're leaving and what we're changing.
Because these are most of the last meeting you asked us to add in.
Right, so.
We changed our mind.
One, two.
So one stays, two stays, three can go, or three stays. The IEP question.
I would take out three, personally, but.
Three? Okay. Everybody's go is striking three. Um, four stays?
Yes.
Five, implementation question?
I think needs to stay.
Okay.
I personally think needs to stay.
I think that's basically similar to the question you had, Sue.
My questions aren't numbered.
No, I'm writing them in as we go along.
Okay.
How do you feel the district's homework guidelines are being implemented for your child?
Yeah, that would replace that.
And then, instead of how much time you were indicating.
Um, that was the one where I said something about, is the amount of time your child spends on homework appropriate for his or her, or something like that.
Say that again, Sue.
I said, it's something about like, um, do you feel the amount of time, um, spent on homework is appropriate for your child?
Spent on homework.
Something along those lines.
Can I ask in the guidelines, is there a section that says if, you know, if you're, like, like you were saying, if your child feels overwhelmed, you know, please seize the teacher to talk about your options?
Yep, yep, it says call the teacher and let them know. It also gives permission for them to stop the homework when they get to the, the amount of time that's been recommended, and send a note to the teacher saying that it was just overwhelming and we couldn't get done.
Okay, so I, I guess my question about.
It actually gives a lot more support for students that struggle, struggle with too much homework, but I do hear from parents that are afraid to do it. It's, we've come up with the guideline, we do this so the kids are not overwhelmed.
Right. Right. Right, so do we need to talk about it in the survey? So, doesn't it say in the beginning, you know, have you read the survey? If not, here you go.
Yes.
So.
Here's the problem with writing down. My kid's got too much homework for a fifth grader. You tell a fifth grader to not, to bring in an unfinished homework assignment, it's not going to happen. I mean, your fifth graders want to please the teacher. Fourth graders want to please the teacher. They want to, they're not going to bring in, even though the superintendent said, we can write a note and say, we, we've stopped at fifty minutes, or an hour, the kid's not going to do it.
I wouldn't say all children. My kids would. It, it's also about culture in that classroom, then. If kids are, you know, really comfortable saying, I really struggled with this, I need to come back and get some help from you, that, that's where we want kids to be, and that's where teachers want kids to be. You know, we don't want them to be worried about not having their homework done, and, you know, maybe not done by them, or they didn't understand it. So, I think if, if we get a lot of feedback along those lines, you know, maybe we can look at the culture of that message, or, you know.
Because there have been times when I know that my son come home and said, my teacher said, if this is too much, then I'm allowed to stop.
And he's okay with stopping, or not necessarily?
He didn't, but he said the word, so I just.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of you just do say that, yeah.
But some kids, like, just can't.
Yeah, some kids internalize that, they don't want to get their stuff done, not mine, personally.
But if they know that, then how are the parents going to, um, you know, like, let's say my kid knows, like you said, that they can stop doing their homework, and the parent sees that, and still says there's too much homework? Isn't it the parent seeing, oh, yeah, they can stop, so I need to follow those guidelines?
This is Long Meadow. That doesn't happen. The parents don't.
Yeah, but some parents do. You can't make everybody in the same boat.
There's very few. I, I mean, the problem is, most parents are not doing that, and most kids aren't doing it, and so if you do it, you are the only one in the class. Nobody in my daughter's class is going in without their homework done, as far as I know, and they all are very good friends.
All the kids in middle school can't wait for homework pass, so they don't have to do the homework.
Oh, yeah, my, my kids enjoy their homework passes, but not.
That's fine when you're allowed to do it, but it's, so, can we just go to the next question, though, just so we can move on?
Yeah.
So, do you believe the amount of homework is consistent with the guidelines?
Well, I think that one can go out, because that's really the question we asked right above it.
No, we asked, is the amount of time spent appropriate for your child?
How do you feel the district's homework guidelines are being implemented for your child, and do you believe the amount of homework is consistent with the homework guidelines? That's really the same question. I think what I was saying is, Sue's next question was, is the amount appropriate, and then the second question was, do we have, you know, whatever, can you access ways to deal with it?
If the homework is overwhelming for your child, do you feel your child has options?
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's seven.
So, wait, so we changed, do you feel the amount of time spent on homework is appropriate for your child, and then we took out what? Do you believe the amount?
Well, then, could we put the, do you believe the amount of homework is consistent with the guidelines, in place of, how do you feel the homework guidelines are being implemented for your child?
I think that makes sense. That's not a word.
Yeah, that's a nice way to say it.
So keeping, I don't even know what number that is, the one at the bottom of the page.
That one's seven, so we're going to keep seven and get rid of five.
Okay, and then after that one, is the amount of time spent appropriate for your child?
Yep.
And then, what comes after that?
Seven is, will be, if the homework is overwhelming for your child, do you feel your child has options? And then, so eight would be, do you believe the amount of homework is consistent with the homework guidelines, so we can really move that up to five, just because it makes sense to do it earlier.
And then we're keeping, has your child homework assigned over vacation?
Yeah, so we're going to keep nine, and then we'll keep ten, which is, is your child reading every night according to the guidelines? And then we'll keep the open response. So, eleven questions. I'll type up a revised and send it to you, Diane, so you have what we're changing. I'll do a crosswalk.
Do the guidelines, are they envisioned, do they include the time to study for exams, or is it just straight homework, or what, what was the?
In the high, at the high school, at least?
No, all of them, the studies built in.
So when it says an hour and a half, that's including study time for whatever exam?
Projects, worksheets, study time.
I think that's where, those are the weeks where, if there's any complaints, it happens that, you know, like, there's an exam coming up, so you have your regular amount of homework, plus the study. That's when people are thinking, we're going over.
Or two tests.
That's the most common thing. I, actually, in my own home, I hear that sometimes. Not that there's general complaints, because usually it's fine, but some weeks when there's an exam, plus the same amount of homework, the kids feel a little overwhelmed on those weeks.
Welcome to high school.
Yeah.
John?
I have a question about, who's going to get this survey?
Parents.
How is it going to be distributed? Are you, are you trying to do a public opinion poll, where people have reliable, predictable opportunity to participate? Or is it just going to be handed out, and whoever gets them, gets them, and the others don't? But what's the methodology?
It will go out through school mail, school messenger to all the parents.
So each, each parent in the district will get a copy of this survey?
Yes.
And then they're free to do what they wish with it?
Yes.
Is that going to be explicitly laid out?
Yes.
Okay, no, I just want to be sure. You know, you get a bunch of people from one sector who are gung ho, it's going to tilt the whole, all right? So everyone will, everyone will have a chance to participate, is what I'm saying.
We'll be able to do that.
We'll be able to know. Yes. And we'll know.
Whether they do so or not is indicative of their interest in this topic.
Yes.
And then it proceeds to get broken down.
Well, we might find that people aren't that interested in it, and that would be fine, too. I mean, it's really.
We should just hire Gallup.
But then I think, once the survey gets emailed out, I would suggest that we put a link on the district website, and ask the schools to put a link on their website, so that parents at least.
They probably should have opportunity to use a paper copy, too, somewhere, to have a paper copy.
Right, so, to put every option out there that's available. All right, are we done with this?
Yeah, so, based off the feedback, I'll type up the revised questions and send them to Diane, and we can be good to go.
Yep, I think so.
So we're ready to send it out?
We're good to send it out after I type up the revised questions.
Everyone's okay with us sending this out?
I am, sure.
Great.
There's still a comment section at the end, right?
Yep, yes. Yeah, no, we only changed the, the meat inside.
All right, so, back onto old business, Kim.
Where are we?
We're on letters for funding.
So, I mean, I just, I had emailed you guys some links, uh, back in April. I don't know if it's, I don't know, um, where you guys stand on it, but a lot of the high, high, um, what about, the higher level districts, similar to Long Meadow, um, that don't receive as much funding like Long Meadow, are writing the state and asking for, um, better funding for towns like us. And I don't know if we want to kind of join the bandwagon and, and write something similar. Um, I put a couple of examples, I'm sorry I didn't print them, but I put a couple of examples in there from Lexington, and Winchester, and Upton, and Cambridge. Um, and I don't know if we wanted to do something like that as well. You might have more to say about that, I don't know. Um, I just, we're, we're underfunded, we know it. I don't know how effective it is, but, you know, if the state hears from all of the towns like us, I, I think it does say something to them. I don't know.
I think it's a great idea. The superintendent's pushed back on chapter seventy all the time.
Yep.
Uh, we did get the formula redone several years ago, but it's still that if you're a well-to-do community with little business, you're not funded appropriately. It's very woeful, is correct.
Isn't it an old calculation?
Yeah, it came in with Ed, with Ed reform back in ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
And then they redid it.
With the frameworks, no.
No?
They've reviewed it.
They did a commission to review it, but they haven't implemented their recommendations.
They came up with a lot of really nice things that would help districts like Long Meadow. That's part of the foundation budget review. And they, they can, they completed that this year, uh, and the estimated cost of implementing their recommendations is somewhere to the tune of two billion dollars or so. So the Senate voted on this part, I'll just roll in my update.
Oh, please.
So the Senate voted as part of the charter school reform bill, uh, to fully fund the foundation budget over the next five years. However, that bill probably will not make it out of, it will not make it out of the House. That bill will fail, um, for two reasons. One, the MTA opposes charter school reform, they oppose lifting the cap, and the pro-charter school groups are, they want to go to the ballot. Both groups want to go to the ballot. So, uh, it's unlikely, given the fiscal environment on the state level, that this will get funded anytime soon. However, the other day, a joint session of the legislature voted in a constitutional convention to approve a change to the constitution, uh, which would be the, the fair share amendment. It's got to go to the ballot in twenty eighteen, but essentially, it would be a graduated income tax. Right now, Massachusetts has a flat tax. It would tax people with income, people who make, uh, people who, not millionaires, but people who make one million dollars or more per year, an additional surcharge of what, two percent, two or three percent? Estimated to generate several, I think, how many billion dollars? A lot of money.
A lot.
And it would be dedicated specifically for transportation and schools. So, there are opportunities down the road, residents of the Commonwealth have to get behind that. But you're talking two billion dollars worth of revenues that don't exist, having to be dedicated to schools to fully fund, uh, the foundation budget, which is not going to happen anytime soon. So, the message really has to be, and Kim, I agree with you, that school committees, especially in communities like Long Meadow, where we don't receive a lot of state aid, uh, need to, need to go to our legislators, and we need to say, you know, we are struggling. And it's not just the schools, you know, the town also takes a hit every year on its chapter ninety, on its unrestricted governmental, you know, assessment aid. We are constantly being left behind, uh, and Long Meadow, as you've heard from Richard Foster and Stephen Crane, is really at a disadvantage, because we don't have new growth, we have nowhere to grow. Uh, we don't have a lot of business, and we don't have any industry, and so the burden consistently falls on residential taxpayers to fund increases, and this year, we didn't have enough. And there's an agenda item later where we needed more money, we don't have. So, I agree, we, we absolutely need to be talking to our legislators, and we need to really understand that these issues are not, these are not Long Meadow issues. These are Lexington issues, these are, these are, you know, Littleton issues, and Ca- well, Cambridge is a bad example, but Harvard, Mass issues, uh, you know, these are, these are small community issues that, I mean, and really, what's worse, worse than Long Meadow, is the more rural districts in the Berkshires, and then Franklin County, and Hampshire County, where they've got no development, and they've got low populations, and they have to regionalize, because they don't, they can't afford to keep their schools open. So, we're doing a poor job in a state of taking care of education the way we should.
All right.
Should we be writing a letter?
Yeah.
Right now, the vote on that, at the constitutional convention, had Senator Lesser supporting the proposition, which means that it will go forward to the twenty eighteen, and eventually, it will appear on the twenty eighteen ballot.
Yeah.
But Brian Ash did not vote for it. So, I mean, we can do some education locally on, on that. There's a mentality out there of, you're not supposed to talk about increasing taxes. The fact is, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is short of cash. The governor, what, two weeks ago, imposed a, a discipline on, on spending, told a freeze, and said, uh, we don't have the money. So, yes, we, I, I support full-heartedly what you're trying, what you're proposing, and I think we should be doing it. Every time I get a message asking for my support, I sign off on it. Yes, we need more revenue. But we need to prepare to ground, and, and prepare people for a rational discussion on why we need some decent taxation, new taxes, fair taxes, not just a blunt, we don't want any more taxes. And that's, that's where we need to educate folks.
Did you know that the Commonwealth has a law that if we exceed certain revenue benchmarks, our tax rate actually goes down? So this year, it went down, because the revenues were high enough. The problem continues to be that things like mass health, the, the cost to insure people and run those programs actually exceeds the revenues. So in a year where we've collected more revenues than we ever have in history, we also have a deficit of a billion dollars. So, how does that work out? We've got issues. We, we need to raise more money.
Well, there was a ballot question a couple of years ago in Massachusetts that effectively lowered the flat rate tax, and what was it? It was climbing to seven point five, and they rolled it back to seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that rollback costs.
Costs money.
Costs money, available for schools, roads, hospitals, and all the rest of this stuff, so.
So I'm, I'm in favor of, um, writing this letter. I don't know, can we, can we request that, can you draft a letter, since you've been, you know, reading them, and, and then present it to us, or how is that?
And I just have to make a disclosure. And I just have to make a disclosure. I'm going to have to check with the ethics commission because I'm technically, as far as I know, not allowed to petition the legislature because I'm an employee of the legislature. But it might be different because of my role on the committee. So I'll get back to you whenever I can actually sign it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so Marie, we've got your report.
It's been a busy two weeks with a lot of activities happening at the schools. You heard the sports reports, our team's doing exceptionally well, which is always nice to hear. The Long Meadow High School had their spring concert, it was absolutely amazing, held in the auditorium. There was recognition of David Fontes, who will be moving on next year. There will be another concert this Thursday night, it's the best of the best. So if you have time, it's at 7 o'clock in the auditorium, I encourage everybody to attend. We have extremely talented music teachers as well as students, and it's a pleasure going to their concerts.
Can I ask you a question? Forgive me for my ignorance, David Fontes is leaving us?
Yes.
I saw that.
He's moving to Pennsylvania.
And he is the man that took over from Mike Musi?
No, that's Michael Reinhardt, this is another vocal teacher.
Oh, okay, all right, so we have a replacement?
People will vote for Peter Topson.
Oh, okay, we found a replacement?
They're hiring now.
Okay, thank you.
Possible model school, 14 members of the MSBA came to visit. They joined Bobby Barquette, Peter Greenberg, Tom Landers, Tom Mazza, Scott Lehman, and me for an informational session and tour of Long Meadow High School. They're going throughout the state. They've narrowed down a list of schools that could possibly be model schools due to energy efficiency and beauty and design, et cetera. Our high school is well-designed, state-of-the-art, and I think it would be an excellent model for other towns to use. We also had the Lower Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Award Ceremony. We had staff members, family members, and students attend the Lower Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Award Ceremony. It opened up with the middle school students playing brass instruments under the direction of Travis Higa. Every year they invite top-notch musical groups from throughout the area to perform, and ours was selected this year. We recognized four great teachers that were selected by administration and staff together on a committee for their contributions to education. The nominees come from teachers directly and then we decide who wins the award. This year, congratulations go to Susan Newton, grade seven math at Glenbrook Middle School, Kelsey Dearie, she's the new teacher award, and she's the recipient for the high school math teacher, Anne Marie Johansson, grade five teacher at Blueberry Hill School, and Hillary Golden, high school art teacher. Each of these teachers have significantly impacted the lives of children in our district, and they deserve our gratitude as well as this recognition. The Mecca banquet was also held last Thursday night. It's a regional dinner that celebrates the successes of our Mecca students. We wish our Mecca students well and we thank Sandy Kelly for her dedication and work with our, with this special population. Kindergarten screening has taken place. Every year we interview our newest students and we do a screening. The test results used to make sure that we're prepared to meet all the needs as they enter kindergarten in September. So we welcome our new kindergarten as well as all the new families joining Long Meadow Public Schools.
Any questions for Marie? All right. One thing that I wanted to mention is that the information about transportation for next school year has been emailed out. It was an email sent by Long Meadow Public Schools. In case parents have not received it, as I didn't, you may want to check your spam folders because a lot of it is going there. Or if you have questions about transportation for next year, to contact the business office. What is the deadline for registration, Tom?
I think it's June 24th.
Okay, so just as a reminder, the transportation, if you're interested in transportation for next year, you do have to register by June 24th so that the routes and the stops can be determined to be most efficient for the following school year. So I wanted to mention that. And then we had on here, it was mentioned at last meeting that you would like to add an additional meeting after the election for reorganization. I didn't know if that was something you still wanted to discuss or add to the calendar. So I think, Michelle, you had brought that up?
Yeah. So the election is on June 14th. Wanted to see if anybody could meet on the 15th.
Instead of the 13th, or in addition?
I would say instead, just move it from the 13th to the 15th.
Sorry, what day is that? The, what day is the election? We have a meeting on Monday.
Election is Tuesday.
Election's Tuesday, okay.
So Michelle is recommending that we cancel the meeting on the 13th and have the meeting take place on the 15th.
At what time?
Seventeen.
I could do that at seven.
I can do seven.
Sue's not available. Tom, were you available?
Might be challenging for me, but...
Okay, what about this end of the group?
I'm available.
I am.
Providing, I'm not stuck in Boston.
Yeah, I think I can make it, Tom. I think I'm all set.
Liz, you said yes?
No, sixteen's worse.
It's spring sports season.
I can't make the 15th.
Okay, so none of the admin team can make the 15th?
And what, we would just be reorganizing?
Well, if we're canceling the meeting for the 13th, we have to take, you would have to take care of all the business that was scheduled for the 13th, the warrants, the whatever would have been on the agenda for the 13th.
How about the 16th, can we do that?
I can't do the 16th. I got my 40 under 40 gala that night.
Okay.
Can't miss that.
No.
Getting my award. And obviously we can't do it on 14th.
Right.
Wait, when's the next meeting after the 13th? Wait, I'm on the wrong one.
After the 13th, this is 27th.
27th is the next meeting.
I'm sorry, Liz, what's?
I said the 20th's a middle school graduation. I just had said, what about just moving?
And then you run into the issue of warrants, right? So maybe we just leave it.
Could you hold the meeting on the 13th and just reorganize on the 15th? If you only have that one issue to take care of, you don't necessarily need the administrative team to select your chair.
That's a good idea.
Well, generally, isn't that meeting opened by the superintendent because there is no chair?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I could see if I can flip this.
Could delegate that to...
I can make that out, I don't know if that's necessary.
Roy, they just don't even...
Oh, your last two weeks, sorry.
All right, Tom, you were suggesting keeping the meeting for the 13th as scheduled for business and then reconvene on the 15th for the reorganization. So, Michelle, since this was your proposal, is that something that's acceptable?
If we, yeah, if we can't all get together on the 15th, I think. I think, I just think it's too long to wait till the 27th.
To reorganize.
Any chance we could...
You need a chair, right.
But every year we've waited until the next meeting. I don't...
Yeah, there was a next meeting last year, I think it was the next, like, week I was there. Something like that.
The year before it wasn't, so I'm not sure.
Right, but both of those meetings, you had a chair who was still on the board. So they were just the chair until the next meeting. Whereas in this case, you're...
I'm bound up whenever you all want to meet because I won't be involved with it. I just need to know whether there's a meeting on the 13th or not.
So the 15th at seven? Michael, you said you can't be there?
No, I can do that, I can do the 16th.
After election day.
And you're assuming that your newly hired members are available that day?
I don't know.
Oh, because they need to know what to... Learn to have to put things aside.
Well, let's...
They'll have to learn to be flexible.
We'll just send it to them, see if they can...
They're probably watching right now, have them send you a text.
Okay, so we will keep the meeting for the 13th as our business meeting, and there will be a special meeting that will need to be posted for the 15th for the reorganization.
Diane, could you let Jess and Stephanie know that there will be a meeting on the 15th?
Just for time scheduling, do we know if there's a lot on the agenda for the 13th?
I have no idea yet, I just finished this agenda.
I think I'm not...
I don't know what...
I know we're going to have handbooks for other levels. Other than that, nothing's coming. I'm sorry.
We're going to have to have a vote of the budget to revise it based on the changes.
I might have a report that night.
Does Nick have another report coming up?
No, I think it's just Sue's.
Both, both of Sue's hats.
Yep.
And the warrants.
And the warrants. Well, I'm sure we'll find some other stuff to talk about between now and then.
Well, we don't have the homeworks, so we're going to talk about.
Thank goodness. All right, so we've got that.
So then would you cancel the 15th?
Tom?
Sure.
Or Liz, or whomever?
I'd be fine with me.
Because I know we already did Whitson's.
We just talked about Whitson's and have this in presentation. Let's see, we had a little bit of an end of the year report, the year-to-date budget update. We talked about the new science books and how we want to try to fund them. That's about it.
Yeah, just on the year-to-date budget report, so our deficit, projected deficit for FY16 has gone down slightly from our last update. Again, I still consider it to be a conservative projection, so I think it's on the high side that there'll be some other funds either freed up from encumbrances or not spent based on my projection. So again, I don't know that it'll be a significant amount, but I don't expect us to finish the year in the deficit. So, but I did want to give the committee an update based on the fact that we're still trending just slightly below zero.
We also just kind of talked about a possible spending freeze.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about stopping all of the discretionary spending and trying to use some of those funds. This projection does assume that all of the discretionary funds will be spent out by June 30th, which is not usually the case. I think my response was, well, I think we would need to give them time that some of them may have planned for using some of the funds that are available at this point in the year to give them an opportunity to make those purchases that they thought they'd be able to without giving them forewarning. So we're going to bring it back to our admin team this week, as we moved it last week.
Because we're finding it difficult to fund the science curriculum, which is definitely needed, and the books...
I was going to say, the geometry books.
It's called geometry, yeah.
Well, yeah, and those, but the estimated cost for the geometry books is at $40,000 right now, and the science is $178,000. And we're, right now, with everything zeroed out, you know, with changes, right now we're at a negative $23,000, which doesn't put us in a good place. So, I don't know. Marie, we talked a little bit about some ideas to hopefully find funding for some of it, to at least have a plan to roll out the science program because the teachers also came to us with that option of 70, 70, and 70, or something like that, which the long run is about $30,000 more that the district is spending. But it at least allows us to start something FY17.
Correct, that was on the dialogue.
We're trying to fund the science.
Hear more about that next meeting, is that the idea?
Yeah, we'll bring it back to admin and get their input about what they might have had planned for their available funds and ask them to put through those orders and then tell them that we're going to hold off and try to make those necessary purchases for the high school and the elementary science. I don't think, I fully expect not to have enough to make the full purchase of $178,000 for the science material, but our goal is to get at least year one, but I can't guarantee it.
That's a lot, that's a hundred, if you do year one, that's $110,000 if you do the year one of science and the $40,000 for geometry.
Yeah, I think we talked a little bit, too, about possibly using some school choice money if we need to, to fill in.
We talked school choice, maybe tapping into discretionaryism for next year, that each of the schools contribute a little bit, the four schools that are involved, and looking at some other possible savings. So we've been talking about that internally. But I'm optimistic we'll be able to do it. It's a priority to get those science materials and textbooks. It's a priority for me.
Any other questions for finance and budget? And Tom, you said that you will be bringing forth a revised budget for approval?
Yes, finance sub is meeting this weekend, probably in two weeks, so.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so Energy Task Force, Liz and Kim, was there something that needed? Did you guys meet?
No. We haven't, we were going to meet the end of the month, or June.
We don't have a meeting set up, I've got to email Marie, have her set something up.
But Kim's trying to get some information or purchase some rain sensors for the sprinkler system so they don't go on when it's raining.
At all of our fields.
Smart idea.
Do you ever run by and see the rain going, the sprinklers going in the middle of the rain?
All righty, Michael, did you have anything else legislative?
Yeah, so the Senate is in the middle of its budget this week. As it stands right now, the Senate's budget, it's important to remember that the budget in the state goes like this. The governor releases his budget in February or March. The House takes up their budget in April, the Senate takes up their budget in May. And then through June, the House and the Senate meet in what's called a conference committee to try to compromise because their budgets are very different. And then the governor signs the budget, or he vetoes certain lines. And then the legislature either overrides or accepts those vetoes. Right now, the Senate's in the middle of their budget debate starting tomorrow. Chapter 70 did take a little bit of a hit in the Senate budget. Long Meadow took a assessment of, a negative assessment of $55,820 compared to the governor's numbers, which had us at $4,490,006. So something to keep an eye on. I don't know if it's going to go up or down. I'm sure we can expect it to fall somewhere in the middle in conference. So just something to keep an eye on.
Any other subcommittee updates? Okay. All right, so we do have the elementary science curriculum, like Kim referenced. We were presented with a request for adopting the new elementary science curriculum at our last meeting, and the materials have been available for our review. So I would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee adopt the FOS, Next Generation Program for Use in grades K through 5 in all three elementary schools.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Russ?
How are we going to vote on this right now without knowing the funding?
Tom?
Well, normally we, you have to adopt the curriculum similar to earlier in the year you adopted the new geometry textbooks. And then once funding becomes available, the curriculum's adopted so we can make the purchase.
Couldn't we just do that together, though?
You could.
This is a situation where we're not sure we're going to be able to fund it.
The challenging part would be is if money becomes available late this year, I would have to wait for a school committee meeting to occur for you to approve the curriculum. If you adopt it tonight and I find that we have some money, I can move forward by putting in a purchase order in FY16 without having to wait either until a meeting sometime in June, which could be challenging at that point for me from a procurement perspective.
Any further questions?
It's not been uncommon for us to adopt curriculum and then determine when funding is available to make the purchase.
But you wouldn't be able to make the purchase until we decide where it's coming from, anyway.
If it's within the budget, yeah, I could come back to you for a transfer later on, line item transfer. But if the curriculum's not adopted, I wouldn't be able to even make that purchase until you approve it.
Okay, because the one thing I heard that I'm a little concerned about is the school choice idea. You know, if we have leftover monies, but school choice, we kind of keep rating it, which I admittedly voted on for the other purpose, but I wanted to try and take it out of bed, which we're still trying to do.
We're trying.
But I don't know about adding to that, so.
I think the concept was if we were able to amend our budget FY17 and not use that $50,000 out of school choice to balance it, that then we might use some of those resources to help pay for... out of school choice to balance it, that then we might use some of those resources to help pay for some of this curriculum initiative, which is really what we've tried to do in the past, these one-time curriculum purchases.
So we'd have an opportunity to vote on the budget issues before it actually gets purchased, anyway.
If it's gonna be school choice, absolutely. We would have to come to you.
Yeah, we have to vote on the, any transfer appropriations, so.
It's always been the recommendation to keep school choice at two fifty or above, so we're not looking to go below that when we're making these recommendations to you. We're, um, expecting to make sure that we're adhering to that, um, past practice.
Can I ask about this, uh, cost here? Uh, we're phasing it in, so instead of, instead of one-third of one-seventy-five, we're paying more per year, quite a bit more. When we do it, when we phase it in.
Well, we're also guaranteeing we have to do it the next two years.
Wouldn't we get the base cost?
Um, my recollection was that, um, phasing it in, although not ideal, would allow us to at least start using the material with a kit for each grade at each school. They would have to share them and move them around. The ideal cost of, or purchase of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand funded all up front is obviously gives them all classrooms at all of the elementary schools, all of the kits.
But that represents a discount cost, right?
It does represent a discount, but at this point, we do not have that funding source available to make that purchase in FY16.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify that. Russ?
But I think what we really have to think about is based on what we think the budget's gonna look like next year, are we gonna have the money next year and the year after to fund the rest of the curriculum that we're supposed to get to complete the program?
Good question.
I mean, that, that's, I think something we probably should talk about more at the next meeting, but I don't know where that money's gonna come from, if we're back to looking at staff or finishing a curriculum program that we need. That's a tough call.
Yeah, and I wish I could give you a better answer. It's so hard to, to tell from year to year. With unexpected new costs coming up that we didn't plan for, so it's, it's really, and then attrition. Again, it's a piece of it that changes every year, so I wish I could give you an answer to that question, but I really couldn't give you something with certainty.
Yeah.
Michelle? So, Sue, or Tom, um, do you remember, if we, worst-case scenario, if we purchased the one year, could we continue to use that one-year option with just the disposable, you know, and share the kits?
Yeah.
So if, if the funding wasn't available, we could still use what we purchased. It wouldn't be just a loss, right?
It wouldn't become obsolete, yeah.
No, we would continue to.
And then the consumables weren't that expensive. They were fairly, and so in the worst-case scenario, the teachers would just have to rotate the kits, and again, not optimal, but we wouldn't lose that money. We'd still have the curriculum and.
It'd still be better than what we have now. There's nothing, so, definitely.
But it sounded like we would have. I mean, it really doesn't work that well.
It will be a challenge. It will, and it may be, you know, it might look a little different at each building, and it will depend on their schedules and how many, you know, um, grades or sections there are in a grade, and so they'll have to get creative with it, but they're determined to do it, and we're getting positive feedback from lots of teachers who are welcoming a new program, so that's good news. I wanna keep the momentum going in that direction.
And if, as another alternative, if we needed to, could be applied for some leave grants that might be able to help with, you know, I don't know.
Try.
Sure. If we've adopted it, then, you know, to supplement what we might already have.
Typically wanna do, um, things that we should, we should be purchasing for students, so if there's some extended part of that curriculum that we could look at, relief, that might be a possibility, but probably not for the text itself. We wouldn't think that that would be a leave funded.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay, so we do have, um, the superintendent's evaluation this evening. Each one of us completed an evaluation individually and submitted it to Diane for compilation into one document, which is what we have before us. So generally, what we have done is we give the, or I give the summative. Overall, um, we don't go through how each one of us scored for, for each of the standards or goals, but we do share, um, comments, our, our own personal comments, if we so choose, after each one of those, um, compiled assessments, so. Just so that everybody at home knows, the superintendent's evaluation form that we use does come from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and it's divided into several parts. One is the assessing the personal goals that Marie set that were approved by the school committee, which are divided into three separate sections. The professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and a district improvement goal. Then there are four standards in which we evaluate, um, the superintendent, um, on instruct, and these are determined by the state. Instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Those two sections are then summarized into an overall rating, and again, there are comments for each of the sections. So, beginning with the professional practice goals, which that goal, just as a reminder, was to oversee the effective implementation of the elementary after-school planning time, to increase student achievement, to implement homework guidelines for the dis, oh, I'm sorry. Professional practice goal was only overseeing the effective implementation of the elementary after-school planning time. And summatively, that was, um, met. The scale for these three goals are, did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met, or exceeded. So for professional practice, um, the overall summative was met, and if the committee would like to share any of their comments, I guess I'll start with you, Russ, and we'll just go down the table and take turns.
So these would be the comments we wrote on page three of this?
These would be, oh, I'm sorry, these would be any of the general comments, so I think I'll wait with those and just do all of the goals together. I'm sorry. Um, so for student learning goals, we, Marie had three, which was increased student achievement, implement homework guidelines for the district, roll out Bring Your Own Device for Grade Eight. Summatively, that came to significant progress. And for the district improvement goals, explore elementary health curriculum, implement new technology curriculum, update technology plan, and increase communication. Overall, the summative evaluation was significant progress. So now going into the standards, um, so standard one of instructional leadership. The five sections under this were curriculum, which ensures that all instructional staff design, effective and rigorous standard-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. Instruction, which ensures that practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work, engages all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness. Assessment, which ensures that all principals and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to determine student learning, growth, and understanding, and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning. Evaluation, which ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. And data-informed decision-making, uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment results and growth data to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning. These standards have, um, only four, um, basis for evaluation, which is unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. And the state does provide rubrics for each standard to give guidance as to how to assess. Overall, for instructional leadership, the summative evaluation was proficient. So now, Russ, I'll start with you, and we can move downward.
So you want us to read the summative performance comments? Cause we have comments under each.
The comments under the standard one, if you so choose, and at the end, we'll do the summative comments.
Page seven.
Okay.
So page seven and eight?
Yes, ma'am.
Comments.
But we also have comments at page three.
Right, that'll be at the end, when the entire evaluation for the final.
Alright, so, under standard one, uh, one A, the rollout of the math training was less than ideal. Teachers were provided limited training before the start of the school year, unless they chose to take the training over the summer. One D, the evaluation ratings of teachers and administrators were well outside the recommended guidelines provided by, by DESI. When compared to other wealthy school systems, our evaluation ratings were substantially higher, even though the outcomes for students were not necessarily. Uh, one E, based upon the numerous discussions regarding student assessment information, it's not clear that we have a strategy for assessing data and trends in order to improve student outcomes.
Do we, do we all need to read our comments?
If you don't, if you don't wish to, that's fine. I just wanted to give everybody the opportunity to share their comments. Kim?
Um, well, I can, one A with the curriculum, um, I think that the curriculum at the elementary level is a work in progress. We know that we need a new science curriculum, and not being able to fund it is, is, to me, not, not acceptable. I think we should be able to fund something we have needed. And then, I know that one B with instruction, uh, win is still a work in progress. I know it's to address the accommodate, the diverse learning styles and levels, but I, I just don't see it a hundred percent effective. I think it's a work in progress. I don't think it's a hundred percent there yet, but I don't think it's unsatisfactory either, so. I, I just, I mean, it takes time to implement something.
My comments were that Marie has continued to provide the administrative team with the tools needed to evaluate and interpret student achievement. She has empowered building administrators to take, take this data, share it with staff, and utilize it in the most effective manner in order to facilitate improvement. The data is collected, is not, the data that is collected is not only shared with the administration, but also communicated to the school committee in an understandable manner. Data is not being collected simply for the sake of collecting it, but being used to constructively make changes to practice so that all students are able to achieve to their fullest potential. I personally would like to see more unannounced visits to classrooms to validate best practices are occurring on a daily basis. Michael?
So.
You didn't have a comment?
Yeah, so it says that I don't have a comment, and I did write comments for every single one, but apparently they didn't save when I sent them to you, and they're not in my doc either. But gave you a proficient. And, uh, I'm sorry that there was nothing attached, cause I thought there was. I, it's not here either, but I did type it.
And John, you didn't have any comment?
I had no comments, but I rated it proficient.
Okay, Liz?
Um, I just outlined some of the things that we had talked about and some things that were going on, like the homework guidelines were being, still being tweaked. Uh, our virtual learning, we discussed in October. Ed, the educators evaluation, we discussed in February. MCAS park review, November twenty-third, student learning BYOD, November twenty-third. And we had a tech update on March fourteenth. Lot of things that I forgot that we had talked about, to be honest.
So, now moving on to standard two, management and operations. Again, there are five sections from DESI. Um, environment, keep, develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. Human resources management and development implements a cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction, development, and career growth that promotes high-quality and effective practice. Scheduling and management information systems uses systems to ensure optimal use of data and time for teaching, learning, and collaboration, minimizing disruptions and distractions for the school-level staff. Law, ethics, and policies understands and complies with the state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, and ethical guidelines. And fiscal systems develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with the district and school-level goals and available resources. Overall, for standard two, the summative evaluation is proficient. Again, these are the comments that will be on pages fourteen and fifteen for school committee members. Again, I'll just start with you, Russ, if you would like to share your comments.
Okay, so my overall rating for standard two was needs improvement. And under human resources management and development, I, I wrote the hiring and selection process needs to be overhauled. It is imperative that we post in the correct outlets, and that we make sure that we reach the most qualified applicants. Under physical systems, I indicated that the budget process was a major disappointment. The PowerPoint presentation lacked the detail necessarily, necessary to effectively review the budget. We need to conduct a more in-depth analysis of the budget on camera. Concerns regarding the split team should have been relayed to the committee well before our final budget vote. Further, the elementary science curriculum, curriculum should have been presented prior to our budget vote.
Michelle, would you like to share yours? Kim?
Under environment, um, I, we weren't able to bring in the health curriculum into the district. We were, I didn't completely agree that we were encouraging each individual school to purchase their own social-emotional programs and not have a unified curriculum in, in the district, and that we also lack an anti-bullying program. I thought was something we could, um, improve on. Under human resources and management, um, we didn't quite have some luck with our people services director. He was being watched, and we still had budget issues. Wasn't really a great choice in hire. And then, under fiscal systems, needing improvement with the FY17 budget was recommended to cut some teachers, which would increase the class sizes. Class size didn't align with the district's ideal class size. And the FY16 budget is, being in a negative balance right now, doesn't, um, feel like it was managed the best it could be. And again, not able to fund the science curriculum and the high school geometry books we knew we would need.
My comments were Maria's taken the contractually added time for elementary meeting and ensured that meaningful agendas and goals were set. She continues to hold high standards and uphold all laws, mandates, and policies. She continues to monitor operational plans while allowing the business building administrators to set plans that are appropriate for their specific building. Maria's worked with the entire administration in order to create a reasonable budget under difficult circumstances. She has worked to address social-emotional health within the confines of the daily schedule and budget. In that regard, we have heard of the success of full-time adjustment counselors at the elementary level. Michael?
Didn't, didn't say it.
Got lost in con, in context. John, I didn't have any, um, there weren't any recorded for yours.
Yeah, I rated it a proficient.
Okay, and Liz?
Um, I just listed some things that we did this year, that she did this year. Hire, in the process of hiring people services, um, hiring of the Williams principal. New initiatives, whole-day kindergarten, health curriculum, although the town side would not fully fund our initiatives. She met with the safety committee in January. Uh, January also did a five oh four training, and November, um, we had an MOU discussion between town and schools.
So standard three is family and community engagement. There are four subsections for this standard. Engagement actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community. Sharing responsibility continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders, excuse me, to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community. Sharing responsibility continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders, excuse me, to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community. Communication engages in regular, two-way culturally proficient communication with families and committee, and community stakeholders about student learning and performance. Family concerns addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner. Overall, the summative, bless you.
Thank you.
Summative evaluation was proficient. Comments for these are on page 20 and 21. Russ, I'll start back with you, I'm sorry, you didn't have a comment?
Yeah, I just said I rated standard three proficient, so I didn't put a comment.
Okay, Michelle, did you wish to share on this one? No? Okay, Kim?
I rated proficient as well, but I do want to call out that I, one of the things I really liked was that, this year, you engaged the parents with the special programs committee, hosting three well-thought-out speakers that were well-attended by the parents in the district. The newsletter sent out three times a year is an effective way to communicate with the parents in the district. But the emails out to the, sorry, the emails out to the community still need to be preferred.
My comments were, Marie continues to engage all community stakeholders in the schools. She has embraced the need for social-emotional programming, which was brought forth by parents. In leading the special programs committee, four presentations were brought to the district throughout the year and were widely received. Marie has continued to improve on her communications with the communal, community, utilizing both print and electronic means. When issues have been brought to her attention, Marie has continued to engage with those involved. Examples would be including the concerns of the parents at Williams with the BYOD and the survey regarding district homework guidelines. Marie remains committed to addressing concerns brought forth by either meeting with individuals on a one-to-one basis or by meeting with groups who have shared concerns. She listens carefully, and while her decision may not be to the liking of the other party, she does what is best for the students and the district overall in order to move forward. Now, Michael, you did.
That one, you went through.
You've got a comment to save there, if you'd like to share it.
I do. So I gave, Marie gave you a proficient in this, I think? Yep. What I, my feedback is that, you know, communication continues to be a point of needed improvement for Superintendent Doyle. Evidence of this can be seen during the announcement of the Wolf Swamp principal search, where clear, concise communication of parents could have alleviated many of the concerns that the Wolf Swamp community had.
John?
Okay, I rated this proficient, I wrote, the superintendent's search involved all community stakeholders. Principal's search did the same, our search was open and fair.
Liz?
Okay, our school administrators are highly qualified educational leaders. They have experience in leading our district becoming and remaining one of the top districts in the state. I believe that collaboration between parents and the community and the administration should be an ongoing collaboration partnership with a platform for exchange of ideas. Prior decisions being made by the administrators is wonderful, and parents or the community assist in things such as fundraising, supporting teachers, taking part in councils, school committees, search committees, bringing new ideas or realistic suggestions to better our ready, high-achieving schools. Remembering that, again, experienced educators and administrators have the ability to bring an objective decision-making process to difficult decisions with the entire school community in mind. I gave an example of bringing the special events committee, I believe that's called, with the speakers.
Special programs?
Special programs, sorry. I was tired.
Alright, standard four is professional culture, under which there are six objectives. Commitment to high standards fosters a shared commitment to high standards of service, teaching, and learning with high expectations for achievement for all. Cultural proficiency ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected. Communication demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills. Continuous learning develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices, and theory to continually adapt practice and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his or her own practice. Shared vision successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. And managing conflict employs strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict, and building consensus throughout a district or school community. The overall summative score for that is proficient. Russ, I'll start with you, if you would like to share, these are the comments on page 25 and 26.
Yeah, before I do that, I have a question on this one. So, we have six indicators, three of which were needs improvement, and three were proficient, and the overall rating's proficient. So how was that decided?
And that would be directed at Diane?
Yeah.
And I actually pulled out my computation because I have a feeling you'd have a question. So the way it was scored was I had to give everything a numerical value on how you all scored, rated superintendent. So in the six different areas, there's a numerical sum.
Okay.
And then it also goes across the bottom for however you scored unsatisfactory needs improvement. And it all averaged out to 2.57, which was above .5, so it goes up to proficient.
Okay, so basically, there were some exemplarys, and even if there's unsatisfactory, it averages out.
Yep, it all averages out to 2.57.
Okay, so, I rated this area unsatisfactory. My comment was, this is the weakest area of performance, clear, concise, and accurate communication with the school community is essential to the smooth running of the school system. Many times, the communication with constituent groups has resulted in confusion, conflict, and disagreement.
Michelle, did you wish to share? No. Okay, Kim? Did you wish to share?
No.
My comments were Marie is committed to high standards, not only personally, but for her team as well. She shares her expectations and models them regularly. Continuous learning remains a priority, again, with utilizing data information that is obtained in order to facilitate change. While conflict is inevitable, Marie listens closely, allowing all parties to share, and only then will attempt to obtain consensus. Michael, you didn't have any? Sorry. John, you didn't have any? Liz, did you?
Well, I rated her proficient.
Liz, did you wish to share?
No, I'm alright.
Okay. So, in taking all of these parts, the three, three goals, three categories of goals, and the four standards, those are then. Those are then compiled into an overall summative performance, which resulted in a rating of proficient. The overall summative rate of impact on student learning had three choices of low, moderate, or high. Overall summative was moderate. And then there was the chance for overall comments, and we found there was three, and four, and five. So, I'll again start with Russ, if you would like to share your overall comments.
In regard to the goals, it is clear that the initiatives were implemented with the exception of the elementary health curriculum due to lack of funding. But it is unclear whether any of the initiatives were a success. I questioned the student achievement goal due to its lack of an objective standard by which it could be measured. Ames Web was suggested as a means to measure performance, but the data will not be available until after the summative evaluations due. The homework guidelines have been a subject of concern amongst parents, and the BYOD policy caused substantial concern at the Williams Middle School. In regard to the four standards, I included comments under each standard not rated as proficient. Overall, the budget process and communication with the school community are extremely important aspects of a superintendent's job responsibilities. There were far too many circumstances this year that resulted in confusion and disagreement amongst the school committee and/or the school community.
Michelle, would you like to share?
Actually, the comment in here was not my, this is my error, it was meant for the rate impact on student learning, so this wasn't my overall evaluator comments. I didn't put a separate one for that, I just want to say thank you for your time, and I think you showed a lot of areas where you've improved this year, and I appreciate the effort in your retirement year to show improvement, so thank you.
Kim, did you wish to share?
Mine, most of these are pretty much a summation of what some of the other things I said, but one of the parts is. The BYOD pilot at Williams seems, it did have some troubles. The parents felt it was not well-thought-out before being piloted this year. I sat on the multiple PAC meetings where the voices, parents voiced their frustrations. We read the emails. Marie was at the last PAC meeting, listening to parents at the May 17th meeting, which was a good step in the process. Unfortunately, I don't think it was advertised that you would be there to hear their concerns, so the attendance was low. But you did attend that, and I think that was a nice step. While the district-wide homework guidelines were rolled out, they were not implemented successfully at all the schools. Homework at the elementary level is consistently inconsistent. The attempt to put out the survey to the parents is being made. It might be a little bit late at this point in the year. Earlier, a couple of weeks ago, you mentioned that you are aware that the three elementary schools are assigning different amounts of homework, but yet the problem still exists. Some students have consistently three to four hours of homework at night, while others in the same grade level receive 30 to 50 minutes or less. We're, if the administration's aware of the problem, it shouldn't be allowed to continue that way. And just the budget concerns continue to be a problem, and for me.
My comments were that Marie has had another busy and successful year. While it is true that she has not fully completed some of her goals, homework guideline survey to be sent out, up to this meeting with the parents from Williams regarding BYOD, the final newsletter for June, and the completion of updating the technology plan. I have no reason to believe that she will not carry out these final tasks with timeliness and professionalism that she has exhibited with her other goals. Knowing that she is retiring as of June 30th, Marie could have taken on this responsibility this year. However, that's not in her nature. She has addressed difficult issues, including having to sit through a difficult superintendent search process and budgeting in a very tight financial year. She has had successes as well, particularly with the special programs committee speaker series. Unfortunately, the recommendation of the health committee was unable to be implemented due to budgetary constraints, but their work was extremely valuable. We continue to see academic growth and success at all levels within the district. Marie has worked diligently to keep school committee members, or to keep the school committee as well as the public informed on current matters. She has remained committed to working collaboratively with all stakeholders. She has worked hard to make sure that the district is in fine shape for her successor and that a smooth transition will occur. I'd like to thank Marie for her hard work and dedication, as it is reflected in the successes of our district, and I wish her much success in her future endeavors. Michael?
This one actually made it in.
This one came in?
Yeah, look at that. Superintendent Doyle has met the majority of her goals for the school year, and as such, has received a proficient evaluation for the school year. Acknowledging that this is her final review, Superintendent Doyle has worked to ensure that effective implementation of planning time at the elementary schools have occurred. She has worked to increase student achievement, most evident in Long Meadow High School scores. And she has rolled out BYOD in the middle school. Superintendent Doyle has completed the homework guidelines she began working on several years ago as well, to the best of her ability. Superintendent Doyle has worked to ensure that learning at high level occurs in all grades, and that continuous improvement as an organization exists in our schools, and that a positive learning environment exists for students. Communication continues to be a point of needed improvements for Superintendent Doyle, and has been a point of needed improvement during her tenure in Long Meadow. With that being said, Superintendent Doyle has met the expectation she set for herself this year.
John?
Okay. Student learning is reflected in the test scores throughout the district. Student achievement is also reflected in the number of colleges, college acceptances attained by our students. Superintendent Doyle has improved in a number of ways over the years as a superintendent of a school system in a community that makes high demands of our schools. My overall rating is proficient. Her family and community engagement is exemplary. Long Meadow's schools have been well-served by Superintendent Doyle.
Liz? Did you wish to share?
Sure, I just, I also had something that didn't make it on your sheet, but I had it, so I'll just say it. Before any relevant comments, I just wanted to say that I thought the evaluation had many aspects that were, that are unknown to the school committee members. And because we're judging Marie on the work that we see she does, but also work that we don't see evidence of, I think it's a fair assessment. So if making judgment on her efforts is subjective to hearsay from staff or community members, then this evaluation cannot be considered a fair assessment. I said Marie has done a great job in getting the whole staff at Marie Schools on the same page. For example, wind blocks and after-school planning time, common assessment. Wind block has been working well for the past year. Also, Marie efforts in helping the contract to get negotiations go smoothly, adding the extra time to the elementary teachers' day for collaboration. Sharing best practices now across the staff. Marie has also tweaked common planning time and continued to do so to make it work. I also like Marie, that Marie has been cooperating with adjustment counselors to starting and develop a social-emotional curriculum for our students who are struggling. And I wanted to say thank you, Marie, and enjoy your retirement.
Alright, so, with the few changes that'll need to be made, Diane, then the final evaluation will go into Marie's file. I wanted to give you the opportunity to, to speak in regards to your evaluation, if you would like to do so.
I'd like to thank everyone for the time and effort that you put into my evaluation. It has been an honor serving as superintendent in Long Meadow. I would like to thank my administrative team and the staff for accomplishing many of our goals this year. We've an outstanding district, and I've enjoyed my six-year tenure in Long Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, there was a request to give an update on enrollment, on anticipated enrollments for 2016-17. Marie, did you want to address that?
Sure, Michelle, you asked for an update of projected enrollment, and so it's in your packet. Your copy may not have the number of sections.
It doesn't actually, that was one of my questions.
So if, I'll go through them right now. If we start, we'll go across Blueberry.
Okay.
It's kindergarten, 59 students, three, three budgeted staff. First grade, three staff. Second grade, three staff. Third grade, five staff. Fourth grade, three staff. Fifth grade, four staff. Then at Central School, starting in kindergarten, three staff. First grade, three staff. Second grade, three staff. Third grade, four staff. Fourth grade, four staff. Fifth grade, four staff. At Wolf Swamp Road School, kindergarten, three staff. First grade, three staff. Second grade, three staff. Third grade, three staff. Fourth grade, three staff. And fifth grade, three staff.
So. So I, I'm looking at the fourth grade at Blueberry with the 67. I'm assuming that's a bubble.
The kindergarten at Blueberry is on the watch list, as well as the fourth grade at Blueberry.
What else? I only knew, let's see, so.
The others still seem within reasonable numbers.
And how many, do you remember, like, how many students we got between now and September last year?
It really varies greatly. We looked at that last year over a three-year span of time, and the numbers varied every single year. There was no, no real pad onto it.
I guess, I was only concerned just to know budget-wise, because I know we're so tight right now, and I didn't know, you know, we were, we've in the past been able to add sections, and I didn't know. We have plans or anything.
Well, particular kindergarten.
Yeah, so that's 20.
Because we're going to get more kids than that.
Oh, right.
I would expect more in kindergarten.
Well, yeah, you get one more, two, one more at Blueberry over the summer, and you're at 20 in each class for kindergarten.
Tom, did you want to address the budget question that Michelle was asking?
Are you allowed to say no?
No.
You could say no.
Yeah, again, it's something we'll monitor throughout the course of a summer, and have to bring back to you, and the only area there may be an opportunity is if there's some attrition in the FY17 budget. What we had to rely on in the past, and we did add, I think, a grade six at Glenbrook this past year, and an extra section somewhere at Blueberry, I don't remember exactly where though, but we did add two sections back, based on enrollment from when the budget was approved, to increases based on students moving in. So, we usually, we don't want to wait too late, because then it's difficult trying to hire somebody mid to late summer. So we usually do try to wait at least until we're at a point where we know we're going to need that additional section. Who else would have talked to Marie about where we, you know, positioning of the location for an additional section, space-wise?
Right. Another somewhat enrollment-related question, and I don't know that we ever really had a chance to discuss it, but would there be a possibility if there were enough parents interested in half-day kindergarten to offer that? Is that even feasible at this time? I just, I know there are some that, that would prefer to have a half-day for their children, and I feel bad that we're not even, I guess, engaging the interest in it. Is that, have people come forward and asked, or?
Not that I know of, but I, I don't know that they would come to me.
There was one person that, but that was very early on, that indicated she would rather do half-day. I don't know if they ever registered. I didn't really keep track of that name.
I don't know. I was approached by one person.
We only had 13 students in the program last year, so we did build this budget knowing that we couldn't really do half-day in the free full day, because it would be another teacher and another aide.
Right.
Which would substantially add to the budget.
Okay. Are there options for the parents if there are some that only wanted a half-day, other than just not showing up? You know what I mean? Like, what, or can, could we tell parents that if they're concerned and they wanted a half-day option to contact?
I know the teachers do not favor that at all. They really want them to have the full day.
Most districts, once they go to offering full day, eliminate their half-day programs altogether, and don't, I think that's every district in the Commonwealth, that once they've adopted the full-day program, they've eliminated the option for the half-day program.
Okay.
Just looking at these numbers, and looking at, I know we keep talking about declining enrollment, but like, I'm looking at the, one of the sheets we got earlier in the year that was 2015, 2016, projected and actual, and we're higher right now. Our student count, like, we've got, we were 211 fifth graders, which, we're at 214, right? This is current fifth grade, or is this projected for next year? So I would look at sixth grade for next year, it's 219.
Projected for next year.
So we're, you know, and you look at grade six, 236, and that's 240. Grade seven, this year, 220. It's 226 here in eighth grade.
Do you have a date on that? Because I did a comparison from the August meeting that we had, and I had a negative, we went down 13 kids.
This is from February, or whenever, during budget season, when I asked Tom to put together the projected versus actual from 2011 all the way to 2016.
The only, without having the document in front of me, it might not include outplaced or itinerant staff. So the, this document you have today includes those students, so there's a, there's a line that would show you the number of students that are either not a district placement or itinerance. So I don't think the document I gave you would have included that information.
Okay.
So you would want to back out, say, for sixth grade, six students, which would give you 213 projected for next year.
Okay. So it's 211 here.
And I'm only guessing, Kim, just based on maybe the information I would have put together for you, I probably would have only-
Yeah, I can't imagine you would have included that.
Yeah, I wouldn't have included that.
Something with the graph, the comparison.
It's, oh, it says right here on the bottom. Does not include outplaced students.
Any further questions on projected enrollment? Okay. Warrants?
I moved that the school committee approved the warrant badge number 2200 of the school lunch FY16 fund, dated May 27, 2016, in the amount of $60,413.53.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
I moved the school committee approved the warrant badge number 3172 of the general fund FY16 fund, dated May 27, 2016, in the amount of $365,692.27.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Okay.
We do have minutes for approval.
I moved that the school committee approved minutes to the April 25, 2016 school committee meeting as presented. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion about the minutes? See none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I moved that the school committee approved the minutes to the May 9, 2016 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the minutes from May 9? See none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. We do have an executive session planned for this meeting, so I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry. I moved that the school committee adjourn into executive session to comply with or act under the authority of a general or special law, i.e., general law, C30A, Section 22G, consideration of release of executive session minutes from previous meetings, and strategy as it relates to contract negotiations with the director of pupil services, not to reconvene into open session.
This motion requires a roll call vote.
Oh, sorry, this motion requires a roll call.
So we have a motion in a second.
We don't have a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Roll call vote?
Aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Grodsky, aye.
Russell Cooper, aye.
Thank you very much, and have a great evening.